I also want to take a moment to recognize contributions of the City of Vancouver staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart is on a leave of absence for personal business. Chair, um, sorry, councillor Carr.
Here.
And councillor Dejanova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Present.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weed.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Blythe, the deputy mayor and holding the chair. Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting has form and the entire council is virtual.
Thank you very much for that, Clerk. So before we begin, I have some announcements. The public may participate by phone, speaking in person, or submitting written comments to council. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Ben City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments, and this link will also be tweeted out. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak if only and only if those represented are on the line or in person and must not be speakers themselves. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next so that the clerk may advance your slides. I also want to note that the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. I'm reminded that council's role at a public hearing is a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may: one, approve the application in principle; two, refuse the application; or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. And finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on a date to be identified at the end of this evening when council can better assess how much time will be needed to complete any remaining items on the agenda. So first item on the agenda is our CD1 rezoning, 1515 West 49th Avenue. And before we move to presentation by staff and to hear from clerks, does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item one? Hearing none, I'll proceed. So the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Stuart Howard Architects to rezon 1515 West 49th Avenue from residential district to comprehensive development district to permit the development of two, three, and a half story residential townhouses with eight secure market rental residential units, a height of thirteen point five meter and a floor space ratio of one point five one proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing: eighteen pieces of correspondence in support, two pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to three thirty PM today.
Thank you very much. So any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. Before the close of the speaker's list, the phone number will be tweeted out and made available also on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speaker's list. We have Carly Rosenblatt, rezoning planner with the rezoning centre, planning urban design and sustainability, here to present the application.
Rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 1515 West 49th. Can't hear you. Is this better? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. So this is an application which proposes to rezone a site at 1515 West 49th Avenue under the Affordable Housing Choices and Tier Rezoning Policy, AHC. Staff would like to note for council that a yellow memo has been prepared to update the recommendations to include an amendment to the subdivision bylaw. The revised recommendations for this report are contained in the summary and recommendations. The subject site shown in red is made up of one lot at the northwest corner of West 49th Avenue in Granville. The lot is zoned RS3 residential and currently vacant, except for a detached garage at the north end of the lot. Surrounding sites are zoned RS and include single detached houses and the Trinity Baptist Church. South of the site is a CD1 zone property that contains Granville Gardens, a three-story senior supportive housing development. The site is approximately seven hundred and forty-four square meters in size and has a frontage of approximately forty meters along Granville and eighteen and a half meters on West 49th. A small portion of the adjacent house at 1525 West 49th extends onto the subject site and is contained within a private easement that remains in place today. The proposed rezoning application does not seek to change the agreement and the proposed building has been designed around it. The house at 1525 West 49th was built in the nineteen twenties, renovated in the sixties, and previously sat on a larger lot until the property owner subdivided to create two lots. The new property line bisects a portion of the house, and in nineteen ninety-three, the property owner registered a private easement to validate the encroachment. The lot was later sold to new property owners. The site is located in our Butis Ridge-Carrisdale Shaughnessy neighborhood and well-served by public transit along Granville Street and West 49th Avenue with bus routes. There's a bus stop located directly in front of the site. The Forty-Fifth Avenue Bike Way and Cypress Bike Way are also located within several blocks of the state and represented with the dash blue line. The Housing Vancouver Strategy sets a target of twenty thousand new market rental housing units across the city to help address Vancouver's historically low rental vacancy rates. This rezoning is being considered under the AHC policy, which was approved in twenty twelve. In twenty nineteen, council approved the secured rental policy, which consolidates opportunities for rezoning for secured rental housing previously contained in the AHC policy and the previous Rental One Hundred policy. 1515 West 49th is not eligible for rezoning under the updated Secured Rental Policy, based on its location and distance to neighborhood shopping area. While the AHC policy was closed to new rezoning inquiries after June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, applications received up to this date can continue to be reviewed and assessed under the AHC policy. The inquiry for this rezoning was submitted prior to this deadline and the report can still be considered today. The intent of the AHC policy is to deliver one hundred percent secured rental housing. Rezoning applications considered under this policy must meet a number of criteria, including fitting contextually with neighboring development and meet location requirements. The subject site represented with a yellow star on the map is located on West 49th arterial and can be considered for ground-oriented residential buildings up to three and a half stories or four-story apartments. The AHC policy allows for a maximum of two projects within ten blocks along an arterial. There are no other AHC applications within the ten-block limit. The application was submitted on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, with revised plans received from May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. The revised plans increased setback from the easement, removed one lock-off unit, and adjusted the positioning of windows and landscaping while the general form of development remained the same. It proposes eight three-bedroom townhouse units that are one hundred percent secured rental with a density of one point five one FSR, heights of thirteen point five meter, and a total floor area of one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven square meters. Parking is located at the rear of the site and being provided as per the parking bylaw. It's anticipated this project will contribute to approximately twenty-eight new onsite and offsite construction jobs. This slide demonstrates a comparison between market rental and home ownership costs for housing in Vancouver's west side. The blue box on the left shows the average market rent for newer buildings in the west side with average household income served. The orange box on the right shows the average monthly cost per unit type associated with home ownership and the average household income served, as well as the cost of a twenty percent down payment. This project proposes one hundred percent three-bedroom units with an average size of approximately fifteen hundred square feet. With respect to proposed market rental units, these would be secured through a housing agreement prohibiting the stratification of units. Following submission of the rezoning application, a city-hosted virtual open house was held from September fourteenth, twenty twenty to October fourth, twenty twenty, on the Shape Your City platform. The application drawings and details were made available online following application submission, along with my contact information in a form to submit feedback. In total, we received approximately one hundred and twenty-four pieces of feedback. We heard a variety of comments throughout the review with support for the provision of rental housing, building height, density, and fit with neighborhood context. Comments of concern related to the massing and setbacks between the development and adjacent home, as well as the number of parking spaces and impacts of the development on existing traffic in and out of the rear laneway. A three-and-a-half-story height and proposed density align with the AHC policy and is consistent with similar townhouse rental buildings. The upper story is designed to reduce massing with the floor area largely contained within pitched roofs and dormers. The courtyard open space between the two buildings and the ground-oriented units facing both streets contribute to the residential character of the streetscape. The landscape treatment and building design address privacy concerns with a landscape buffer and fence along the west property line and easement. The plans were revised to minimize glazing and relocate windows to reduce overlook onto neighbors. The application also responded to privacy concerns with an increased setback from the easement that is equivalent to a side yard requirement in the RS3 district schedule. This helps ensure the existing easement conditions are maintained and increases building separation from the neighboring house. The proposal must meet the parking bylaw and new vehicle trips generated by the eight townhouse units are anticipated to be nominal and not have a significant impact on existing roadways. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to rezone 1515 West 49th Avenue from RS3 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in appendix via the report as it meets the intent of the AHC policy. If approved, the application would contribute eight new secured rental units, all of which are three-bedroom in size. As a reminder, a memo has been prepared to update the recommendations to include an amendment to the subdivision bylaw. The revised recommendations for this report are contained in the summary and recommendations. This concludes my presentation. Both staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
And thank you very much. I see that, I understand the applicant team is in chambers, so is there an interest to speak to the application from the applicant team?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair and council. My name is Neil Robertson. I'm the principal, one of the principal architects of Stuart Howard Architects.
We can hear you?
Okay, pardon me. We've been working on this project with our client, city staff, and in consultation with the neighborhood for nearly four years now. Staff have done an excellent job technically describing the project, so I will instead be briefly focusing on the design of the project. I'm cognizant of the heavy agenda before you tonight and every night, for that matter, between now and summer break, so I'll be as brief as possible. Our initial approach to this project was to utilize a single-block rowhouse massing oriented towards Granville Street with a more contemporary expression. However, after consultation with staff and responding to advice, we broke the scheme into two blocks with a central courtyard and utilized more local neighborhood vernacular in regards to the external expression. The idea being that the massing and expression would more seamlessly blend into the neighborhood. To that end, we made the decision to utilize two distinct architectural styles, one for each block, to more authentically replicate the natural diversity of architectural expression that we observed. In our survey of the neighborhood, we found a strong emphasis of craftsmen and Tudor revival styles, which is what you see before you in our design. We've engaged in a robust community consultation process inclusive of two open houses, one in person before the pandemic and one virtual, as mentioned by Carly, as well as meetings with concerned neighbors and their representatives in my office. All of these in an effort to help give the design team guidance in mindful design refinement. The major concerns that we heard from neighbors to the west were proximity, privacy, and overlook concerns. As mentioned by staff, the house to the west is unique in that some of its wall and its eastern roof overhang our western property line. There is an easement on title which permits them to do so. However, it nevertheless would be create an obvious proximity issue if we were to simply utilize the property line as a point from which to measure our setbacks. We therefore treated the easement as a property line for the purposes of determining our building setbacks. Our buildings are set back from the easement, the same as if they were property lines. In regards to privacy at grade, we've proposed to install a six-foot-high opaque fence with the entire length of the shared property line with a mid-block jog to follow the line of the easement. This will allow for privacy while still providing the owners of the adjacent home with sufficient space to service the exterior of their residence. In regards to overlook concerns and privacy above grade, we significantly reduced the sizes of our western-facing windows by raising the sills approximately three feet, as well as we have ensured that the window locations do not directly align with windows of the neighboring house. We believe that these strategies will ensure the visual privacy of the homeowners to the west. The only other major concern that we heard from other neighbors was regarding parking and garbage servicing. Currently, the lane did ends behind our property. As part of this project, we will be constructing the remainder of the lane and connecting it to Granville Street. This will ensure through-traffic accessibility, including garbage trucks. As the lane is only twelve-and-a-half feet wide, it will remain one-way. However, in our consultation with waste management companies and with staff, there does not appear to be any issues with this arrangement. Also, please note that all garbage storage and staging is provided for on our site. Finally, concerns regarding adequate parking. The engineering department can possibly speak better to this, but we are providing four parking spaces, including one disability space and one car share space in compliance with the City of Vancouver parking bylaw. Additionally, there is a major bus service running along both Granville Street and Forty-Ninth Avenue. The design team is available to answer any questions that you may have. Let me please end by saying that new family rentals and family-oriented neighborhoods add to community. By creating eight new all-family rental units, we can help ensure that this vacant lot can provide attainable, livable family rental supply for sixty years or more. And I hope that you agree and that you'll support our proposal. Thank you.
And thank you very much. I see there are questions from councillors on the queue. This is a chance to ask questions of staff or the applicant team and noting that this will be the only chance councillors have to ask questions of the applicant team. So with councillor Kirby Young first on the queue, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Cheryl. I'll direct my questions to the applicant, and I just want to understand a bit more about the two, last two components that you spoke to being the lane and the parking. And I'm very familiar with the site. It's a really narrow lane, and so you're saying that with one vehicle, and I've been in it, it's quite narrow, just for a standard vehicle. You're saying that the service vehicles, garbage trucks, et cetera, currently go down this lane and there's no issues with that?
I would have to defer to staff to answer that question. I know in the new arrangement that it would be a through, driving-through. I'm not sure how currently garbage trucks.
Okay, so can you comment on that? Because currently, the lane actually does not go through from the parallel side street to Granville. It actually stops at that property on the easement. So you're saying that the lane, it will now have access all the way through to Granville?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, so meaning that people can then enter, which way will be the one-way traffic? Is it one-way just depending upon that it can only accommodate one at a time, or will it actually be one-directional and limited to traveling either in east or west direction?
Thank you, councillor. My colleague Rosemary can respond to that.
I'm Rosemary Jaskovic with Transportation and Engineering Services. Thank you for the question. So the lane ones open will operate much like it does today. So with the narrow twelve-foot lane, it operates currently as one-way alternating. So basically, if there is a vehicle that needs to come through, it's up to the vehicles and the motorists to kind of alternate and make those arrangements with the very, very low volume of traffic that exists there today and that's anticipated with the addition of the development. The twelve-foot one-way alternating is something that's considered acceptable for the context of the area.
Okay, if there were to become an issue in future, would there consideration be given to make it a one direction, one-way?
Absolutely. So if there are, do prove to be concerns or issues in the future, that is definitely something that the engineering department can look at. And there are ways that we can mitigate some of those things by either encouraging motorists to travel in either an east-to-west or west-to-east direction through signage or other geometric ways. But as it stands right now, the lane, it operates one-way alternating today, and we have not had any concerns to date in the lane.
Okay, and then moving on to the parking piece, and I'll start with the applicant. There's, the spots are at grade and there's four for eight units. So what was the rationale, given these are family-sized units, to doing a fifty percent ratio?
Thank you, councillor, for your question. So there is, one of the four parking spaces that's being provided is a car share space. It's available for use by the residents, but also as for the neighborhood as well. So the idea being that one car share could certainly offset a lot of that need. And additionally, I believe as part of the car share agreement with the car share provider, all residents within the development get, as part of their rent, get access and membership with the car share company. And that combined with two major bus lines running right adjacent to our site, we felt that it was, would be sufficient and, as I mentioned, is in compliance with the parking bylaw.
Okay. Do staff have any further comments with respects to the parking ratio?
But as, as the applicant and staff have mentioned, that the parking is in compliance with the parking bylaw, it does take advantage of the transportation demand management policy, which permits reductions to vehicle parking with their, in addition to their proximity to excellent frequent transit. So that is something that is completely compliant with the parking bylaw and allows developers to kind of meet anticipated market demands as well.
I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Hardwick, over to you.
Thanks. My question is for staff, and very briefly, I'd just like to confirm from the referral report that this, and also as mentioned in the presentation by staff, that underlying this is a council authority's previous decisions, relevant council policies for this site include the Housing Vancouver Strategy 2017. Should be a yes/no question.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick, for your question. Yes, it is included, but it's not the enabling policy. Affordable Housing Choices is the enabling rezoning policy.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick. Councillor Swanson.
Sorry. Yeah, I have three questions for the applicant and one for staff. So is this going to be a pet-friendly development?
Funny you ask that question. I had that discussion with my client just the other day, and indeed, it will be pet-friendly.
Yay. Do you have any idea, ballpark, in today's dollars, what each unit will sell, will rent for?
Thank you for the question, councillor. I'm afraid I don't. I'm not the person that deals with the financials of this project. I could put the question to our client and respond to you at a later date, but I don't have that answer in front of me right now.
Do you know if there is any plan to Do you know if there is any plan to apply for federal or provincial financing?
I'm not sure at this stage. I know that the CMHC does offer some fairly good rates that help enable affordability, so I'm sure that'll certainly be on the list of things that they're going to explore when they get further down the path, get through the development permit, assuming that the council would support this proposal.
Okay, thanks. Now for staff. So this is going from allowing one unit of housing to allowing eight units of housing, which ostensibly makes it more valuable. And it looks like the only land capture, land value capture we're getting is maybe some DCLs, or maybe most of the DCLs will be waived. I'm wondering if there, if we've done anything to try and capture some of the increase in the land value for the public's benefit here?
Charlie McNeil, Assistant Director of Planning. The project was exempt from the CAC calculation because it's not in an area where it's calculated. Notwithstanding that, though, the value to secure the eight market rental units in perpetuity would eat up whatever land value was generated by the additional units. So the, as we typically say in the report, the public benefit accruing from the application is actually the benefit of having eight additional market rental units in this neighborhood in perpetuity.
What if instead we just zoned the site for rental-only?
Well, that is options that may, the Vancouver Plan may bring forward to you or be part of the implementation process, but right now, the property is allowed to be a privately-owned property under the RS3 zoning, and the enabling policy simply allows that to change over to market rental with a small component in terms of the number of units that are permitted.
Okay, thank you, dear.
Thank you, councillor Swanson. Councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Chair. And just one question for staff. You referenced in the presentation that the enabling policy is the AHC policy, and I think in your comments you referenced that under the now, the current secured rental policy, that this wouldn't be permitted. Can you just elaborate on what would be permitted today under a secured rental policy?
Thank you, councillor, for your question. It can't be considered under the secured rental policy because of its distance from neighbourhood shopping areas. So it's only through the affordable housing choices that it could be considered for rezoning for rental.
Okay, and so I guess just further to that, is there any other policy framework or door for something like this, or is it simply this policy?
At the moment, this is the only policy that would enable it to be rezoned for secured rental housing.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for questions.
Thank you very much, councillor Dominado. So that looks like the end of our questions list. We're going to now move to hear from the public. So I will just start with caller, or sorry, speaker number one, Andrea Avison. Avison?
Hello, Mary, councillor. My name is Andrea, a long-time Vancouver resident and renter. I know you have a lot of items to get through in the coming weeks, so I'll let my comments start. I'm in full support of the proposal to build the eight rental townhomes at the corner of Granville Avenue. I see that all of the units of this development will be three-bedroom, which is amazing and rare in the city. Lots of people, myself included, are working from home these days and would like to access larger suites, but options are very limited. I'd love to live in this building, and I hope this project will move forward. I will leave it there. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much for calling in. Next, we have speaker number two, Ray Land.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Mayor Stewart and members of council. My name's Raymond Land, and I'd like to lend my support to the modest rental housing development that you have proposed. I have a long history with the area. I grew up in the area as a child, and I also currently live there now. I went to school at Eric Amber, so not too far away from the area. I currently live in the area with my family and my young kids. I've grown up to love this neighborhood, and I believe that this development would further enhance the area. Now, I know there's some reluctance to have this multifamily rental housing, but I believe that this will help introduce more young families to the area. I can say for a fact that my children go to schools, nearby elementary school, with parents and families that are also renting homes in the area, and these are people that I find to be very good people and have a very positive impact on the community. I'd also like to comment on the design, and I believe the heritage style is very attractive, and I think it'll actually fit in quite nicely with some of the surrounding homes. Overall, I think this is a great project, and I hope that the council gives it approval. That's all I have, thanks.
And thank you for calling in. There are no questions. Next, we have speaker three, Sean Goyle.
Oh, yes, hello. Yes, hello, Chair and council. Thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak in support of this development, and I've made a number of points which I think are very, very important. First of all, I've been living in this area for the last 24 years. My current residence is only one and a half blocks away from this proposed development, and I have children and family members and many friends in this area, so I know this area very well over the last 24 years. There's many number of reasons why this development should be supported. To start off, this is catering to families, three-bedrooms. Three-bedroom is specifically targeted towards families, not individuals or, you know, young couples, but it's for people with children specifically. And for children, it's very important that they have access to that type of housing, which is conducive to raising a family. And a townhome is such a development rather than a condo or something high-rise or, you know, those boxes up in the sky. They're not, they're very difficult for children, they're very hard on children. Every time a child needs to go play, he has to take the elevator down and often alone, and then play, and then having pets. I mean, it's just very, very difficult for families to be in any other type of development. So what are the options? So we have single-family housing. That obviously works. However, I live in this area. The housing, current homes, as you could check on Realtor.ca, they are valued at $4 million, $5 million, $6, $7, some are even $10 million. There's listings that are a block or two blocks away from this development, and asking price is $10 million for a single-family house. So that is very, very difficult for young families to afford. If, you know, townhomes fit the bill, they're right in the middle, they're not condos, they're not small, 500, 600 square feet boxes, and they're not $10 million homes, and I think this is ideal. You're looking at a lot that's been vacant for a long time or underutilized. On a single lot, you're going to have eight families, eight happy families. And why will they be happy? Because Carisdale is full of amenities, specifically catering to families. I mean, not only shopping, they have schools, they have skating, and they have the track that newer, Beat a Screenway, they have, you know, Point Grace School and ice skating, I mean, swimming, the community center. I mean, it's full of amenities that are specifically catering to families. So affordability is crucial for families, and I think this is where the city needs to be headed anyway. Whether we like it or not, that is, that is the, almost, it's a moral argument almost, that to provide families with affordable housing that they need. Another few points that I made is, you know, this is, we always talk about the environment. Everyone talks about the environment. And some pay lip service, I'm not, and everything in the City of Vancouver is doing a tremendous job, I must commend, for the environment, which is the right thing to do. On a single-family lot, you're having eight families live. That is much more efficient and much more environmentally friendly. So now, the type of housing, it's not a big, glass, steel, cookie-cutter type of a box building. It fits into the neighborhood. It's not going to, it's not an eyesore. It's going to be, it blends in, and so that's, I mean, it's, it just, it's catering towards it. Now, another couple of things. Historically, I know this is RS3 zoning. That's fine. I don't know when it was designated, maybe 50 years ago, 60 years ago, 70 years ago. But just because RS3 zoning is designated so many years ago, it does not mean it is frozen in perpetuity. Nothing is frozen in perpetuity. We must evolve according to the needs of the residents. That need at that time, perhaps RS3 served it well, and this was single-family, that's fine, but that does not fit the bill now. The need now is, we have so many people who are struggling with rental and specifically for families.
Just going to pause you there. Sorry to interrupt you. You are over your time.
Okay, I'll conclude very quickly, if you like.
Actually, I'm going to have to just stop the timer. No, no, unfortunately, you're out of time for your comments, but we do appreciate hearing from you today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll have to move to the next speaker, who is speaker number four, Artie Goyle.
Good evening, council. This is Artie Goyle. I have lived in this area for past 20 years, over 20 years, I would say, and we have three kids and my kids grew up in this area. They have attended the neighborhood schools, and it was always nice, and they, this area, of course, is a very safe area. And one of my daughters is graduating this year, and she got a nice job, like a pretty good job, but still, sometimes she questions me, Mom, like, how I'm going to afford a house in this area? And I sometimes think that I would love that if she lives in this area, but at a development like this, I think it would give a chance to the young families and the first-time buyers to have their own place, which is a pretty big deal. And another thing I would say, that looking at this development, I think it will not ruin the character of the neighborhood. I think that it can only add on, and so I fully support the development of this project. Thank you.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, but we appreciate you calling in.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have speaker number five, Regina Chandra.
Good evening, Chair, council members, and the public members. My name is Regina Chandra, and I am 100% in support of the proposed rental housing development at 1515 West 49th Avenue. This development site is centrally located and within five to 20 minutes drive to Vancouver Airport, the Dan Arthur Mall, downtown Vancouver, schools, UBC, restaurants, golf courts, and community center in Carisdale. Rental is rarely available in this area, which is in very high demand, especially three-bedrooms. This will also serve to be beneficial to people wanting to move into bigger homes and grow their families when single-family homes are not affordable. I have lived in Vancouver for over 30 years and have seen the rental market. Because of scarcity in rental market, young adults have been forced to live outside their job area and away from their parents, so they therefore moved to Ebert Ford, Surrey, Maple Ridge, Pitt Meadows, Port Moody, et cetera. Bear in mind the rising price of guests and time wasted commuting to and from work. By staying close to work, young adults will save on time, money, and be close to their parents. Today's children cannot afford single-family housing. The trend is townhomes, and this should, this trend should, will continue because townhomes were not there before. I strongly urge the city to move forward with the rental housing development plan. Thank you.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, but we appreciate you calling in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is the end of our registered speakers list, but I will make a second call for speakers. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. Before the close of the speakers list, the phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. And I'll ask clerks just to let us know if that, if there are any speakers coming to the podium.
Thank you, Chair. There's no speakers coming forward in person, and I'm just double-checking if we have any on the line. We have none on the line right at the moment.
Okay, so we'll do our third call for speakers, and then we'll take a five-minute break. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound, before the close of the speakers list, and the number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. And any speakers in the council chamber, once again, please come forward to the podium. So we'll just pause there. We'll take a five-minute recess, since that is the third call, and we'll come back. So that will be at 6:52. So that will be at, uh, 6:52. Okay, staff or clerks, sorry? I'll just, uh, bring us back?
Uh, yes, just one moment, please. Okay, we are back on live, Chair, live.
Thank you very much. So, uh, I'll check with our clerks. Do we have any callers on the line or in the chambers, um, ready to speak to this item?
No, I have a question.
Okay, well, first of all, would you mind just stating your name?
Yes, it's Jeffrey Drewker. And I just wanted to refer to what the architect said, two things, if I may. He said they're treating the easement line setbacks as if it was the property line. So all the distances between the buildings meeting the requirements, um, for setbacks from the easement and not from the property line.
Okay, so, so most certainly, um, we do have councillors who are listening on the, the line right now, who are in the meeting, who have heard your question. It's not a, a situation where we can respond directly to your question, but we can take your question away and, and reflect it back to staff.
Okay, and the second question, if I may. He said that the fence is six feet along the entire length. As far as I could see from the drawing, it's not the entire length. At one stage of two parts, it goes down to four feet. So is that a mistake on the drawings or the way it was presented today?
Okay, so similarly, we can certainly reflect that question back. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So what, yeah, so one is the setbacks, as it really is from the easement taken and not from the property line. The second one is regarding construction. When this is gonna be constructed, how will the trucks actually come and go? Um, or are they gonna first, um, with regard to our parking, we can't park on 49 during the day. Uh, and if we don't have access in and out to the lane because of trucks during construction, I'm not sure how we're gonna park and where we're gonna park. I live on that lane.
Okay, so, so the way this works, you have five minutes to reflect your comments. So you can just let me know when you're complete and any questions you have, councillors are listening and can pose them back to staff.
Wonderful, yes. So it's just regarding the parking, uh, the transport, the, uh, egress, access and egress because of lack of the lane and because there's no parking on gravel and most, many hours during the day on 49. And if the construction trucks are blocking the lanes, I won't have access to my house to come and go. That's only, my parking is at the back of the house and there's only one non-conforming lane. So those are my three comments, if I may. The setbacks from which line and is it with the guy, the zoning guidelines and the construction times and that fence, which I don't see on the drawings, are six feet, the entire length. I, I wrote down, he said, the architect respectfully said it's six, uh, feet opaque, the entire length. I don't think it's the entire length, but based on the drawing, it doesn't seem to be. And I think that concludes my comments. Thank you for, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much for calling in. Uh, we appreciate you taking the time tonight. So I'll check with the clerks if we have any other callers on the line.
I'm just double checking, Chair. And I'm seeing no one coming forward in the council chamber and we have no one on the line.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, so seeing there are no additional speakers, the speaker list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. So I do see we have, um, uh, we actually, there's just a moment here. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Um, just in response to the gentleman that called in, um, he is correct. There, the, the six foot high fence is required by zoning bylaw to end at the front yard setback. So the, for the vast majority of the site, it's a six foot, uh, high fence, but in the front yard setback portion, it drops down to four feet at that location there. Um, and the, and to answer his question also, uh, are, are building a setback from the easement, not from the property line. Um, and, uh, as, as Carly mentioned, in, in response, uh, in compliance with what the RS3 would require setbacks from a property line, we've provided a setback from the easement for that amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does staff have any closing comments?
Thank you, council. We do not have any closing comments at this time.
Thank you very much. Um, and does council have any questions for staff? And I see councillor Kirby Young is on the queue for questions.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'll just follow up on those couple of questions. That caller had asked and the applicant was addressing, but obviously to staff now. And then, so the first one is with respect, the fence is clear, um, in terms of what was said, except for the front yard per bylaw, um, where it goes to four feet. The question with the setback then, just in layman's terms, I'm hearing confirmation, the applicant staff can confirm that the setback is set from the easement. So therefore, does that make the setback less or more than it would be if it went from the property line? Just for clarity.
Hello, okay. Hi, this is Grace Young, development planner from planning. And thanks for the question, yeah. Uh, in terms of the study yard requirements, typically new development only need concern about study yard requirements on their own property, regardless the non-conforming situation of the adjacent site. And however, this resoning application provide a 10-foot study yard, which is wider than, uh, which required in the base zone RS3 and
So sorry, can you just clarify, so it's providing how many feet? And what would the requirement be normally and how many feet do you now provide? Because it's set from the ease back, just to be clear.
From property line is nine feet 10 inch, what I said is just approximately 10 feet. That's the study yard was proposed, uh, for the, uh, from this resoning application, which required and the RS3 base zone is six feet. So it's wider than the base zone required. Uh, I have, uh, happen to say that at the location of the easement, uh, since it's encroached to the, this property line, um, this building, um, provide additional setback from the easement, uh, which equivalent to six feet from the easement, uh, equivalent to the study yard required and the RS3 zone. Um, I also want to add to that, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, if you have a material point to add, then let me know, but I do have limited time. So I just want to be clear. So the zoning would require six feet, but this is actually providing more, uh, just shy of 10 feet, nine feet 10 inches, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
More, yeah.
Okay, and was there one quick additional point you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah. And since, uh, since this is a courtyard form, actually, the majority of the neighboring buildings is interfacing with the courtyard, landscape courtyard, not the building itself. So that will help increase the separation between the buildings.
Because the courtyards are in the back and the rear.
Yeah.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Um, and then just following up on the speaker's last question we heard, which was this for staff, obviously also, was with respects to how will the access and egress, um, be provided to residents that have to rely on that lane to get in and out, um, during the construction period? How, how will that work?
Thanks for your question. It's, uh, Rosalind Jaskovic again, senior transportation engineer. Um, so the resolution of construction transportation management plans is a standard process that occurs outside of the normal rezoning stage. So pre-construction, the sites required to meet within coordinate construction and street use with our engineering department, that typically occurs between the development permit and the building permit stage. And at that time, they would, um, resolve what appropriate permits might be required to secure street space, um, uh, and any potential roadway closures in advance. Um, closures of the lane are very likely to be prohibited. And if they are permitted, um, in rare cases, neighborhood notification would be required and, and done in advance. Um, so that's, that's the typical process for construction transportation.
Okay, so it's generally unlikely, unless there's extenuating circumstances, but generally unlikely that the lane would be closed.
That's correct.
Okay, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thanks councillor Kirby Young. So seeing no other, uh, councillors on the queue for questions, we can, I'll be looking for a mover.
Happy to move the recommendation with the yellow memo, Chair.
Second, Dominado.
Thank you very much councillor Kirby Young and seconded by councillor Dominado. And so is there any debate? I'll just actually move us to a main queue, bear with me. Okay, so the queue's there for debate, discussion on this item. Councillor Carr.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Um, so, you know, I guess first off, I just have to say that, that, uh, you know, we always are seeking, um, affordable housing within our city. And, uh, this may be relatively affordable within the neighborhood that it exists, but it's certainly at, um, $3,349 estimated rent a month, um, needing an income of about $133,000, $134,000. It is not affordable in the grand scheme of things, but it is within the neighborhood. But what I, I am going to support this application and, um, what I, I do like is the free car share. Uh, I like the three bedrooms that it is family oriented. We've been, uh, getting a lot of requests for that. Um, and, uh, and that the scale, the, the architectural form, um, actually do fit the neighborhood. It's not affordable at that scale, um, and we shall take note of that, but it, it does fit in and it is relatively more affordable than ownership within that neighborhood. So, uh, those are my reasons for support.
Thank you councillor Carr, councillor Hardwick.
Great, thank you. Um, I grew up a couple of blocks from this location of the rezoning application and I'm intimately familiar with the neighborhood. And the applicant has done a, a good job in responding to neighborhood character and the ground oriented housing typology and design approach are suitable. Uh, moreover, it appears that staff and the applicant have done a good job with consultation. However, I am stating for the record that I am abstaining on this vote and I want to be absolutely clear that I am voting this way to make a point. Under the Vancouver Charter, uh, an abstention counts as a vote in favor. So to the applicant, this is a vote in favor. Uh, section 145.13 clearly states, "A member of council present at the meeting at the time of the vote who abstains from voting is deemed to have voted in the affirmative." This is not Robert's Rules. According to the city solicitor, and I quote, "The Vancouver Charter clearly recognizes abstention and indicates that abstention is an option available to councillors. In my view, despite the fact the applicable provision of the Charter applies to a technical approach and deems an abstention to be a vote in favor, abstaining clearly reflects a councillor's state of mind considering, considering an issue. Casting a vote in support of a course of action reflects a different intent or state of mind than does abstaining from voting either for or against a course of action. Uh, this is important to understand because a councillor may feel that they have insufficient information on which to base a supporting vote. So I am voting this way because according to staff, the relevant council policies for this site include the Housing Vancouver Strategy and specifically its housing targets. You may recall that in May 2020, councillor approved a motion called "Recalibrating the Housing Vancouver Strategy Post-COVID-19", which required staff, directed staff to provide a list of data, which two years later has not been provided yet. Based on my question to staff just earlier, I all, did also review the Enabling Policy Affordable Housing Choices Interim Rezoning Policy, last amended 2018, and it states, "These changes are intended to be an interim measure to better meet the new Housing Vancouver targets." Thus, this precedent is also unsupportable. And this to me means that every decision that we've been making based on potentially flawed policy is problematic. In closing, more than two years later, council continues to make decisions based on aspiration rather than evidence. And in computer science term, garbage in, garbage out is a concept that flawed or nonsense input data produces nonsense output. And such is the case with the Housing Vancouver Strategy. And I cannot in good conscience vote in favor of rezoning applications based on fundamentally flawed policy. And that is why I abstain, not because fear of voting. This is not Robert's Rules, this is the Vancouver Charter. And I'm sorry I had to go on the record at, at such length, but I'm still within my time. And I just wanted to be absolutely clear on that, uh, to discourage any further misrepresentation. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Hardwick, councillor Dominado.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Um, I'll offer a, a few comments. So, uh, in contrast, um, I am going to be supporting, uh, this proposal. And in fact, um, the enabling policy, uh, was a good one. It's actually one that we do no longer have in place, the Affordable Housing Choices Interim Rezoning Policy. Uh, and, and while we have this project coming forward now, it was already in the application queue. Um, but it was actually something that I personally was looking at as a model to support added density and, uh, housing choices, including the ground oriented housing that councillor Hardwick was referring to. Uh, and so I look at this and I look at this proposal and what's being accomplished and it strikes me as a no-brainer. Um, it's utilizing, uh, existing land that doesn't have any housing on it. It's going to provide, um, secured rental, specifically eight units for families. Uh, and, and as we heard from staff earlier, um, there is no policy door for this. So, um, in other words, we would have nothing, we'd have vacant land, um, sitting there. And, and in fact, this is actually going to, uh, deliver, um, housing. And so when we look at, uh, the issues we're facing in the city, it delivers housing supply, it delivers housing choices, um, it addresses a need for families. Uh, I, and so from my perspective, uh, I think all of council should be supporting, uh, this proposal. It's before us this evening. And so I'm happy to support it and I appreciate, um, a lot of the attention, um, to detail around, uh, the, the two buildings, the townhomes in particular. And so I thank the applicants and our staff for the work on this.
Thank you councillor Dominado, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks. You know, normally when, um, in a public hearing, when a councillor moves recommendations, they have a chance to speak to it at that time. And I'm actually glad that I'm speaking to it, even though that, we didn't follow that custom action, glad that I'm having a chance to speak to it now after hearing from some of my colleagues. Because if we are not enabling and approving, um, nicely designed, this is quite an attractive, beautiful design, family size units. We often hear how much, um, family units are needed, how small the units are that are being built now, um, because of the significant cost of both land and construction. Um, and rarely do you find three bedroom family units, let alone ones that are a good size at 1,500 square feet. And this is rental. When we have a notoriously low vacancy rate across the city of Vancouver, it's also what oftentimes people really say they aspire to have, which is that infill and that gentle density. Um, and let's not forget And let's not forget that this is on a busy couple of streets on Granville and 49th. So I'm at a loss as to if we are not approving this kind of housing in sort of attractive, family-sized, livable rental buildings, I'm not sure what we're doing here, to me. And so for this, I think that the concerns were valid ones around ensuring the appropriate egress in and out of the area. You know, good questions as people are welcoming new neighbors with respect to sort of property lines and setbacks, and ensuring that we're doing our due diligence, that we're supporting access and livability, and meeting our bylaws and policies. But again, and I think as Councilor Dominado noticed, we actually have a policy void when it comes to avenues for people to bring forward rental projects. And there is such a significant difference between the ability to buy a unit like this, a three-story, three-and-a-half-story townhome, if it was strata versus if it was rental. And so if you're looking at several thousand dollars a month versus a $4 million price tag or a $2 million price tag, and the units would get smaller in order to achieve that, that's pretty significant. And people just can't afford that these days. And we have to make room for families and people in the city. So I'm honestly at a bit of a loss as to why there would be an appropriate rationale to not approve this, based on the fact that it's just common sense, that we are hearing from people that this is the type of housing that they need. This is the void that folks are seeing, that people do want to have alternatives to living in taller buildings in some neighborhoods, and that we do want to see thoughtful densification across the city. So I will wholeheartedly support this application. And I want to be really clear, just as my other colleagues were on the record, as to why I am doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young. Councilor DeGenova.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to also lend my support to this project and say that I think that it's great to see councillors come around to the gentle density and ground-oriented housing that we've been talking about for a long time. In fact, it was quite sad to me to see housing delayed for over a year that could have been townhomes for several families and that went up in price simply because there was a disagreement with a type of use, a hospice next door. And it's, it's actually inspiring to me to see a number of different councillors who didn't support that at first now supporting this. And I think that it's important that we do look at how can we not only include more affordable housing in neighborhoods and communities that haven't had it. Now, I understand that this is not affordable for many, but I do believe that if we continue on this trend, considering my experience working in the development sector and private development, but also in nonprofit development, you know, for people who literally have $375 a month to live on in, in their, their housing allowance, it's important that we keep moving this forward. Because if we don't, I don't think we'll see those investments from other levels of government that we're asked about in the question periods also. But I also think that it's important that we do try and make sure that there's a spectrum of different housing options in different neighborhoods and communities. And in Carersdale, this is certainly adding to that. So I will be supporting this. And I'm happy to hear many of my colleagues, some who didn't support this type of housing, you know, back when it was proposed originally on Granville Street, you know, on the west side, supporting it today. So thank you very much, Chair. I will be voting in support.
Councilor Hardwick.
There we go. I, I just wanted to come back on and after listening to this. I want to note that I am not voting against this application. I never said I was voting against it. That is a misrepresentation. If it had been a stratocondo, I would have voted against it because of its inflationary impact on the land. I complimented the applicant and, but I criticized the underlying policy. And as I explained at length, an abstention counts as if it were a vote in favor. So I just had to come back on and restate that because I'm not voting against it. And, you know, on, on the face of the application, it has merit. But the policy is, is what is wrong. And I have complete rights under the Charter to state this as an abstention. So to be clear.
Thank you, Councilor Hardwick. Councilor Carr.
Yes, thanks so much, Chair. You know, I just feel it necessary to make some comment about the comments made by Councilor Hardwick and the underlying policy. And, you know, I do note that the policy that this is based on arose out of the former mayor's, Rega Robertson's, he established a, a standing committee on housing affordability. And I believe that Councilor Hardwick was on that task force, the policy arising again out of the work of that task force. So I find it curious in terms of her particular comments on this matter. I remember it came up during my first term on council and, and, yeah. It, it came as a surprise to, to me to see that policy just put into effect without any public consultation, just deriving straight out of the task force and then implemented at the city level. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Carr. Councilor Hardwick, you have 25 seconds.
And if, yes, I was on the mayor's task force on housing affordability, and I did watch this policy be implemented in a way that has been questionable. And I know we're late in our term. We can't turn the ship around now, but I still will draw attention to its flawed nature. Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of the queue. So I think what we can do is go to a vote on this project, on this application. Thank you. Clerks, I will note that my panel is showing up as Mayor Stewart. So if I could please get a vote in favor, and we can solve that in the next break. Thank you. So that motion does pass with none in opposition. So thank you very much to the applicant and the staff team. We'll be moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is item number two, CD1 Resoning 4310 Slocan. And before we begin to hear from staff, does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item two? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Matthew Chan, architect, to be Zoned 4310 Slocan Street from Commercial District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a four-story mixed-use building with eight secure market rental residential units and commercial space on the ground floor, a building height of 17.0 meter with additional height for rooftop amenity and a floor space ratio of 2.77 are proposed. General Manager Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing. Three pieces of correspondence are reported. This represents all correspondence received up to 3:30 PM today.
Thank you very much. So I'll first, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will also be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. We have Alison Smith, Res zoning Planner, Sustainability Group, Finding Urban Design and Sustainability, here to present the application.
Chair, I don't believe there's any speakers. It's Councilor Carr here. I don't believe there's any speakers. And I moved to waive the presentation.
Thank you, Councilor Carr. So we have a motion on the floor to waive the presentation. Any opposed?
Chair, Chair Bly.
Thank you.
We do need a second.
Thank you very much.
Second, Dominado.
Just a second, please, Councilor DeGenova. So the motion has been moved by Councilor Carr and seconded by Councilor Dominado. And now we have a point of privilege from Councilor DeGenova.
I just couldn't find my mute button, and I understood that if any councillor wanted to see the presentation, we would move forward with seeing the presentation. And I would like to see the presentation, so I want to note that. Thank you.
That's no problem at all. We will see the presentation. And I'll just let council know it came up as something I would flag in the previous conversation, or item is that we are looking for additional time for this meeting if it does not conclude tonight. So I just want to keep councillors up to date on where we're at in terms of this agenda and our ability to complete the items on this agenda tonight. If not, we'll be moved to a far-off date in the future. We're not sure where that is just yet, so just keeping that in mind. I will ask, we'll need to officially withdraw the motion that's been moved and seconded. So Councilor Carr, or we can take a vote. So Councilor Carr, are you willing to remove, withdraw your motion? Councilor Carr, I need to, we don't have.
No, sorry, I'm not.
Okay, so we're going to go to a vote on waiving the presentation, as that was a motion that was moved and seconded. So clerks, if you could please assist with pulling up a voting panel, please.
Point of privilege, Chair, could you please clarify whether the implications of voting one way or the other to, are we rescinding or? I'm unclear.
Yes, so we have a motion on the floor that was moved and seconded. And so now we're voting to waive the presentation. So a vote in favor is to waive the presentation. A vote in opposition is to not waive the presentation. And clerks, if I could, if I could please have a vote to abstain, please. Councilor Dominado, we need your vote. So that motion passes with Councilor DeGenova in opposition. So because it was a motion on the floor, and it's been voted on and it passed, we are going to waive the presentation and continue on. And recognizing that it is, it has been common practice for us to gauge councillors as to whether they want to hear the presentation, but with a motion on the floor not being withdrawn, we had to follow the direction of that motion. Councilor DeGenova, point of procedure.
Thank you. Although this is a bit odd, as we usually don't do this, and I will remember this certainly. I'd like to move a motion to ask for an extra five minutes after we hear from speakers, for speakers, as well as council to review the presentation again after, 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 before debate, but after hearing from any speakers there may be. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and I think that it is important that we give it the time that it deserves. And I have to say, I would have liked to have heard the presentation from staff. We've never found ourselves in this position, but I do realize that, you know, lately here and at Metro Vancouver, that has more and more been the case.
Okay, Councilor DeGenova, we're just going to have to move us along here, okay? No. Councilor DeGenova, we have a five-minute break between speakers, which will provide you with the five minutes you've requested to review the.
I was thinking of an extra five, but I guess not. That's not going to be entertained.
No, I think we're, I think the five you asked for is, is within the process that we have here. You'll be, we'll all take a five-minute recess, and so hopefully that will be enough time that you.
No, Chair, I do think it's within my, my rights to do that, but I'll send it. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have waived the presentation. I'd like to ask if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
My name is Matthew Chan. I'm the project architect. I'll wait for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So council, are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? And I see Councilor DeGenova, you're on the queue. Is that for questions?
I can't remove myself from the queue. I'm not sure why that has happened, but I added myself to move a motion. I'm not allowed to add, to move, so.
Okay, I'm going to move us on to Councilor Swanson. Questions to staff or the applicant team?
Yeah, to the applicant. Will this be a pet-friendly building?
Yes, it will be a pet-friendly building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Swanson. Councilor Dominado.
I'm going to take myself off the queue. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young.
Can council be emailed a copy of the presentation, Chair?
Yes, so staff and/or clerks, if council can be emailed a copy of the presentation, that would be great. So I'm going to do my second call for speakers, and then I'll ask the clerks to confirm if there are speakers on the line. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So clerks, if you could please advise if we have any speakers to this item in chambers or on the line.
Thank you, Chair Bly. There is, there is no one on the, there is no one on the line right at the moment. And I can also add that the presentation is being sent.
Thank you. So we will go for a third call for speakers, in which time we will take a five-minute recess. And if at the end of that five-minute recess, there is a councillor who would like to move a motion for additional time to review the presentation, that's well within the procedure and the right of any councillor. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So we'll take a five-minute recess and come back at 31 minutes past the hour.
Yes, indeed, we do.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will call us back to order and ask the clerks to confirm if there are any speakers on the line or in chambers who would wish, who wishes to speak to this item.
No, there is not.
Thank you very much. So seeing there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today. I suggest we now close the receipt of the public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, thank you.
Does staff have any closing comments?
Closing comments.
Thank you. Does council have any questions to staff? I see Councilor Kirby Young.
Yep, thanks, Chair. I just have a couple of quick, very quick clarifying comments that I wasn't clear on from the referral report. And the first one is, I see that there's a basement area. There's the commercial, because of the slope of the site, has taller height ceilings and a mezzanine as a basement area. But just confirming that none of the rental units are in the basement. They're all at grade. Is that correct? But the lobby entrances.
Yes, thank you for your question. So all of the rental units would be located on floors two to four. So none of them would be at the basement or at the ground level.
Okay, so what is in the basement other than the lobby?
So within the basement level that is below, there's a lobby, which is technically at the ground level. And then the basement, there is residential storage as well as bicycle storage.
Okay, that's great. That was my first quick clarification. My second one is with respect to parking. It says that there's a relaxation of the parking requirements to 20%. And there's two spaces that are surface vehicle, but there's no underground parking, correct? So that meets the parking bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor. So there are two parking spaces that are proposed. We estimate that the parking bylaw would require five to seven spaces, but subject to reductions due to the rental housing proposed and the proximity to transit. We also have Rosemary here who could add to that response as well.
So just on that, can you clarify for me, just I'm unconscious of time tonight. We, is it staff or council that has the ability to reduce the requirements in the parking bylaw from the required five to seven down to the proposed two? What's the policy lever or process on that?
So Rosemary Daskovich, that's senior transportation engineer. It's the parking bylaw under the authority of the Director of Planning, which permits reductions to vehicle parking, reductions to those minimum vehicle parking requirements outlined in the parking bylaw, subject to the delivery of a transportation demand management plan, which is the lever that this applicant is leveraging in addition to their proximity to transit.
So the TDM is based on what? Just the proximity to transits? Or is there anything else that factors into that?
No, so the TDM is a combination of their proximity to transit and then a transportation demand management plan, like an actual plan where they proposed additional measures towards active or sustainable transportation. So in this case, the measures that they've proposed, which are commensurate with the scale of their development, include additional bike spaces for the use of their tenants. And the TDM plan is subject to finalization at the DP stage.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young. I see no other questions on the list. Thank you, Councilor DeGenova. Do we have a seconder?
Councilor Carr.
I heard Councilor Carr first. Is there, so I moved us over to a main queue. Is there any debate? Seeing none, I'll take us to a voting screen on item. Two on the agenda. Thank you very much. And clerks, if I could get a vote assist in favor, please. And that motion passes with none in opposition. Thank you very much, Council. We'll now be moving to item three. And I'll just check with clerks. Do we need some time to transition staff?
Sorry, I was just checking with staff doing hand signals, but it looks like we seem to be fine to proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are moving to item three, CD1 rezoning 44084488 Fraser Street and 707 to 709 East 29th Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item number three? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerks to now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Strand and Locano Development to rezon 4488 to 4488 Fraser Street and 4707 to 709 East 29th Avenue from Residential District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 100 secure market rental housing units and commercial space on the ground floor. A building height of 21.6 meter and a floor space ratio of 3.65 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing. Thirty-two pieces of correspondence support, two-piece opposition, and that represent all correspondence received up to 3:30 PM today.
Thank you very much. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. We have Simon J. Resoning Planner with the Resoning Center, Planning Urban Design and Sustainability, here to present the application.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Simon J. And I'm the resoning planner for this application being considered under the Affordable Housing Choices interim zoning policy. The site shown in red is a full block on Fraser Street between East 28th and East 29th Avenues in the Kensington Cedar Cottage neighborhood. Surrounding properties on Fraser Street are zoned C2, including the site to the south, which is a four-story mixed-use building. To the east is zoned RS1 with detached housing. The site is currently zoned RT2 and developed with six houses and a duplex. There are currently no residential tenants on site. Within one kilometer of the site are schools, parks, childcare and community spaces. Hillcrest Community Center is 1.5 kilometers to the west and includes an aquatic center, skating rink and library. The site is well-served by public transit on Fraser Street, and there are bikeways within a few blocks of the site. The Housing Vancouver Strategy sets out a target of 20,000 new market rental housing units across the city to help address Vancouver's historically low rental vacancy rates. This rezoning application is being considered under the Affordable Housing Choices interim zoning policy, the AHC policy, which was approved in 2012. In 2019, council approved the Secured Rental Policy, which consolidates opportunities for rezoning for secured rental housing previously contained in the AHC policy and the Rental 100 policy. The AHC policy was closed to new rezoning inquiries after June 30, 2019. However, inquiries submitted up to this date can continue to be reviewed and assessed under the AHC policy. The inquiry for this rezoning application was submitted prior to this deadline and therefore can be considered today. The intent of the AHC policy is to deliver 100% secured market rental housing. Rezoning applications considered under the policy must meet a number of criteria, including fitting contextually with the neighborhood development and meeting locational requirements. The subject site, represented with a yellow star on the map, is located on Fraser Street and is adjacent to a local shopping area. Fraser Street is an arterial street that is part of TransLink's frequent transit network. The site can be considered for a mid-rise form up to six stories. The AHC policy allows for a maximum of two projects within 10 blocks along an arterial. One other project within the 10-block limit was approved on Fraser Street at 23rd Avenue in 2019. The application was submitted in July 2021, which represents an approximately 11-month review process to public hearing. The application proposes a six-story mixed-use building containing 100 secure market rental units and commercial retail at grade. Forty-six percent of units are designed as family units in the form of two and three-bedroom units. The proposed height is 24.1 meters and the floor space ratio is 3.65. The development is expected to create 149 construction jobs. A virtual open house was held in October last year. 158 pieces of correspondence were received. Feedback included support for the building's height, massing and density, the addition of rental and affordable housing, and the inclusion of new local-serving retail space. Feedback also included concern for the building's height and density, parking and traffic, and the capacity of the surrounding community amenities. Staff have reviewed the proposal and the height and density of the six-story building is consistent with the Affordable Housing Choices policy. However, staff have recommended relocation of the proposed indoor rooftop amenity. And as indoor amenity areas are included in building height calculations, this would result in reducing the building height by 2.5 meters to 21.6 meters. In relation to parking, the development must meet the parking bylaw. A provision to install parking regulatory signage on streets adjacent to the site has also been included as a rezoning condition. Regarding traffic, any traffic changes commensurate with this project would be consistent with development occurring over time in the area. The location is also well-served by transit and local bike routes. In relation to schools, the catchment area schools have capacity and declining enrollment. Staff acknowledge that nearby community centers and signature programming are generally well-subscribed. Staff are looking at strategies to meet demand across the city's portfolio as part of future capital planning reviews. This slide shows the average market rents for newer buildings on Vancouver's east side in the blue column, and the relatively affordability of renting when compared to the cost of home ownership, shown in the red column. It also shows the proposed average unit sizes, which range from 473 square foot for a studio to 1,100 square foot for a three-bedroom unit. With respect to proposed rental units, these would be secured through a housing agreement prohibiting the stratification of units. This application was eligible to seek a DCL waiver, but the applicant has chosen not to take the waiver. The application was subject to a performative review, which resulted in a cash CAC of $200,000 being offered by the applicant. Real Estate Services staff have concluded the CAC offered is appropriate and support accepting it. If approved, the cash CAC would be allocated to the city's Affordable Housing Fund. Combined with the DCLs expected from the site, the application is expected to deliver approximately 2.6 million in public benefits as well as 100 units of secured market rental housing. This proposal is consistent with the Affordable Housing Choices policy, and staff support this application, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
We are present. More further comments at this time, but thank you for your time and consideration tonight, councillor and chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from, I'll just, sorry, we are on a main queue, but clerks, would you mind moving us to a question queue? And I note that councillor Kirby Young is first up, and then councillor Swanson. And, perfect, okay, great. So we'll move to councillor Kirby Young. And just a reminder, this is the only chance to ask questions of the applicant team.
Okay, I'll start with a quick one to staff, and then I want to leave time to ask the applicant about this. What, can you speak to why staff are requesting that the indoor amenity, rooftop amenity be relocated?
Staff, through review and UDP, believe that the outdoor amenity space should be larger. And to accommodate this, the applicant has decided to move the indoor amenity space to somewhere else within the building to allow more space for the outdoor amenity. And staff support this.
Does that mean that the entire rooftop is amenity and it is all outdoor? For simplicity?
There's recommendations to, in the report, in Appendix B, to increase the size of the outdoor amenity on the rooftop, but it won't be the entire rooftop.
Okay. Are we constrained in terms of maximizing rooftops by current policy to enable full utilization of those outdoor spaces as that becomes more of a premium in the city?
Hi there, Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner. We aren't constrained from a policy point of view, but I believe the applicant often is constrained from a Vancouver building bylaw point of view. It is expensive to make the entire rooftop inhabitable, first of all, so there's an expense problem. Also, when it gets bigger, there's a requirement to have more exits, fire exits, leaving the particular rooftop. So that's also a challenge. This particular applicant has kind of weighed those challenges and has decided to put the, make part of the roof outdoor amenity, but not the entire roof, due to those cost and building bylaw issues.
Okay, great. I'll be following up on that more. So the bottom line is that we end up with a larger rooftop, and then the amenity has relocated, the indoor has relocated inside. Is that a fair assumption? Okay. I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, I have two questions for the applicant and one for the staff. So, starting with the applicant, is this going to be a pet-free building? My usual question.
It will be a pet-friendly building.
Okay, good. Pet-friendly, I should have said. And the second question is, are you going to be seeking federal or provincial financing?
We will explore options for CMHC rental construction financing. At this stage, we haven't committed to that particular financing, but I think it is an attractive option. On previous projects, we have not taken advantage of it. So I think there's a number of considerations, and we'll go through them again for this project and ultimately decide at the time of construction commencement.
Do you know what the affordability requirements are for accessing that financing?
There's different qualifications related to energy efficiency and affordability. And different projects qualify based on a point system and how they, how they score on energy efficiency and affordability.
Okay, thanks. To staff, so I'm looking at the floor space ratio increase. It's almost five times. And we've got commercial on the bottom, which I understand is generally more profitable than residential. So is there something we could do to capture some of this increased value of the increasing density and put it into affordable rents? Like, this doesn't even have 20% affordable, like we've been passing lately.
So the, this project does offer a $200,000 CAC that will be towards affordable housing, the Affordable Housing Fund.
So could we put that into this building and make some of these units affordable?
My colleague Annie Moblis from Housing will answer that question.
Thank you, Simon. Annie Moblis, Senior Housing Planner. The funds get diverted into the Affordable Housing Fund, and then there's a determination of how to invest that fund through other processes in the city. And so it would be outside of this application for consideration.
Having a hard time hearing just the end of what you were saying there. If you wouldn't mind just repeating the last sentence?
Yes, for this project, the funds are being allocated to the Affordable Housing Fund. And then the determination of how those funds are expended is part of other processes in the city, and it would be outside of consideration for this specific application.
So if you had $200,000 for a project like this and threw it into the mortgage or something, would it make much difference in terms of affordability?
It's a good question. You know, when we have a CAC negotiation, we do find that for projects that have, it's usually if the CAC is determined to be around $500,000 or more, that we try to drive that affordability into securing some below-market units in the project. But anything less than about $500,000, and that's a general kind of average, it's really challenging. You don't, you're not really able to secure enough units. So it makes better sense, I think strategically, in adding those funds to citywide considerations to increase affordability through other methods. And so in this case, it was a $200,000 CAC, and the decision was to put it into that larger CAC for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Swanson, so that's all the questions that I see on the queue at this time. So we'll move to hear from the public. So we do have a speakers list. Speaker one, I believe, is currently on the line. Speaker one is Mike Klassen.
Good evening, members of council, and thank you for this opportunity to briefly respond to this proposal. I take it you can hear me?
We can hear you. Please go ahead.
Fantastic. Thanks very much. Again, name is Mike Klassen, and I live on East 27th Avenue, about 120 metres away from the proposed development site. Just by way of background, is part of the local Mountain View Neighbourhood Group. I've been directly involved in sundry community projects, including several local murals, the Fraser Street neighbourhood banners, the Vancouver Street Stories planks that can be found along Fraser Street, and all of which were created with an eye to improving the experience on our streetscape here. I broadly support this application, and I like to commend the proponents on their efforts to enhance the relationship that they're building to the street. There is an opportunity with this site to create a dynamic connection to the pedestrian space and bring new energy and commercial activity to our neighbourhood. While I've heard some concerns from the community about the overall height, now that I see that the rooftop amenity space has been removed, I think some of those concerns would be mitigated through those changes as well. There have been some concerns about available street parking on East 28th, which I should note is, does have parking permits, sort of neighbourhood parking permits. But perhaps staff could take a look at where that signage is, because there still seems to be a lot of demand for that parking from people that are not actually living directly on the street. After reviewing the comments of the Urban Design Panel, I agree with many of their suggestions, and I'm glad to see the new applicant images that were just uploaded just recently that show improvements along all sides of the building. I particularly appreciate the attempt to soften the laneway residential access on the east side of the building, as asphalt will increase heat and off-gassing will make it unpleasant if we don't employ more space for vegetation there. We don't generally make as good as an opportunity to use these commercial laneways in this manner, so I think this is a good step forward. Something that stands out for me from just looking at the design per se, and I'm sorry to get into this kind of level of detail, but as you walk the street and you participate in this area, I note that the commercial laneway, all the exits of the residences along the alleyway, exit straight onto the roadway surface. So some, having some way of delineating an actual pedestrian space in front of those homes would probably be beneficial and would enhance safety as well. And having seen how aggressive some of the drivers, the commercial drivers, with their large, you know, five-ton trucks coming in, as they will for this building, I've seen bollards put up, and for example, in our block next to it, and they've been hit by trucks continuously. So again, we just have to be, take measures. And I realize that there's going to be some road humps that'll be on this alleyway to slow things down, but it's just something to think about. If I could make one other sort of small suggestion is just to try and make best use of the south aspect of the building. I see that it's, it is open and there's a glass area there. But as we know, Vancouverites, when we do get a little bit of sunshine, we do like to take advantage of that. So having maybe a little bit more of an enhancement on the patio area there would be great. I just want to give you just a very quick bit of historical detail about this block that might be of interest to you. In around 2000, in Vancouver, the Mountain View Neighbourhood Group was formed and took on several partnerships, projects in partnership with the City of Vancouver and the local community policing state office in response to public safety and other things that were happening in the neighbourhood at the time. And one of these grassroots projects was an effort, a traffic calming effort, that took place right next toward this property, along 700 Block, East 28th. So that's the block of East 28th, just east of Fraser Street. The street was getting too much traffic, through traffic that would sort of gun down between Fraser and Knight and would put pedestrians and children at risk. So what the neighbours actually did is that they widened the boulevards in cooperation with the city using railway ties. And they put those in in place of curbs, and the city supplied all the soil and the grass seed, and eventually the boulevards were wider. The street was narrower, it slowed down the traffic, and it worked. It actually made it a much safer block. After 20 years, these railway ties are now kind of breaking down. Some of them, a couple of them are replaced over the years, but generally they're in very poor shape. Ideally, this block would get the proper treatment of putting in proper curbs and doing this the way it really should have been all along. And I realize that there's no quid pro quo you can attach to this development per se. But I would suggest is maybe as a benefit of having this new building come into our neighbourhood, that we, that staff put their creative minds to finding ways that we could perhaps getting that block completed in the way that it was, and almost as a tribute to the successful grassroots community work that was done there to slow down traffic. So I'll leave it right there. And again, thank you for your time today. And again, I support this project, and I look forward to seeing it move forward.
Thanks very much. You do have questions? Councillor DeGenova, over to you for five minutes.
Thanks so much, Mr. Klassen, or maybe I'll call you Mike, if that's okay. I was hoping you might be able to share a little bit more on what I would consider parking minimums. But you had mentioned sort of the controlled sort of residential parking restrictions, but you have seen there being less and less parking in that neighbourhood. I used to live on 33rd and Main, and I felt it there. And I know that's just a stone's throw away from this project. It's been many years since I've been there, but was hoping that you might be able to comment a little bit on parking minimums or some of the frustration you and your neighbours and your community are facing.
So I want to be careful to say that I'm not necessarily representing the neighbourhood or any particular neighbours, but again, I did hear comments from them. And I appreciate that this has always been about striking a fine balance between the cost of additional parking spaces, the sort of the slow progression towards more use of rapid transit. This is on a major rapid transit route. And in fact, I would say the bus stop at 28th and Fraser is probably one of the busiest in our neighbourhoods. And, but I do think this will be a rub, certainly, for some people who have been frustrated. And, you know, they maybe have, maybe they're lucky to have some off-street parking, but they rely upon on-street parking, even if it was for a visitor or for their own purposes as well. So again, but every time you add additional parking spots, there's quite a significant cost attached to that. So I guess we'd have to, again, strike that fine balance.
Okay. Thanks so much for answering my question. Really appreciate it and your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further questions. We appreciate you coming to speak to council tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have, we've got speaker five on the line. And I'll just note that speaker four has withdrawn, and speaker two and speaker three are not on the line. So speaker five is Kemp Edmonds.
Hello?
Hi there. We can hear you. You have five minutes to speak to council, and you're welcome to start as soon as you're ready.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good evening to the public and to council. Thank you so much for the time. It's always nice to follow Mike, a long-time community contributor and here on the dot com project. As a lifelong Vancouverite who lives right in the neighbourhood, I actually live a little bit away in a lovely townhouse complex where I got sent to.
Oh, I'm sorry. We may have lost your audio, speaker.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, there we go. We've got you back there. So please go ahead.
Great. Yeah, sorry. My name is Kemp Edmonds, and I live in the neighbourhood. I'm a lifelong Vancouverite. I've witnessed many of my peers leave the city due to lack of affordable housing solutions. And it's easy, very easy for me to throw my unwavering support behind this. I think, you know, Main Street and Fraser, I have ancient pictures of Main Street in my room here in my house from 1910, and Main and King Edward look exactly the same as they did 100 years ago. And we really have a lot of work to do to densify these main arterials, to improve the quality of life for lots of people and for the businesses in the neighbourhood, among other things. I'm a member of the Parents Advisory Council Local School, and I was impressed to learn of contributions made by this home builder to our school and other schools in the area. Always good to see, you know, property development organisations getting involved in that way. It's something we see not often enough. And I've appreciated all the affordable homes that have gone up, you know, between sort of Canby and, you know, in Victoria and Broadway and 41st over the last little while, and there's lots more to go. And of course, they could always be cheaper, and they can always be more affordable, something we have a major problem with in the city. And fortunately, it's something this council is, you know, just a small piece of that puzzle. We've got to look at the national, you know, and macroeconomic factors in our world. Thank you so much for your time. This development is certainly in line with the other recent developments along the street, and will help to lead by example. And in time, ensure that more Vancouverites who work here can live here as well. Thank you for my time.
Thank you very much. And there are no questions, but we do appreciate you calling in to council tonight. Next, we have speaker number, thank you very much, speaker number six, Kareem Windsor.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. You have five minutes, and you can start when you're ready. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, Mayor and council.
I think it's a great location, kind of in between commercial, those houses in this commercial, so it'll fill in the fill in the blank. And I see that we're increasing at like 100 units. I think there's six houses there now, so I think we need more rental. The same developer's building at 23rd and Fraser, which is a block from where I live, and although it's not open yet, it looks like a really nice development and making the neighborhood look better. So I think I think it would be a great addition to the neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you very much for taking the time to call in. There's no questions, but we appreciate hearing from you.
Yeah, thank you. Bye.
Bye now. Next, we have Speaker Number Seven, Nick Calagueras.
Calagueras.
Calagueras, yes, that's you. It's your your turn to speak, and you have five minutes to speak to council. Please go ahead.
Hello, everyone. A couple of things. First off, I I support this project 100%, and I support rentals in the city. As a landlord, I just went through renting a two-bedroom, and I'm going to say an entry-level two-bedroom in the neighborhood. I had so many inquiries over Marketplace that I couldn't even keep up to reply to all the messages. And I had a lineup of people coming to see it. It is heartbreaking when you're trying to help people and you can't because you have 30-plus parties trying to rent your unit, and you've got to pick one. The dynamics of the people renting these units is changing. I've been a landlord for 30 years. I'm seeing in a two-bedroom, three people, four people asking me, would you would you accept this many? Or and about 80% were international students. From India and Mexico were the main ones. So we have increased the amount of people coming in for studying, wanting rentals. So a supply and demand issue, absolutely. Now, I'm also a Realtor, and I work with a lot of people who say, Nick, the mortgage payment, the monthly mortgage payment is not the issue. The issue is saving up for the down payment. So more and more people I'm hearing are looking for newer units that they can call home for a long time. It's like, I can't, I don't have the down payment to buy, but I have the monthly means to afford to live like I bought a new condo. And that's what I think these new projects are fulfilling. A huge need in people that want to live in the city in a new, nice, vibrant place that don't have the $250,000, $350,000 down payment to buy an entry-level condo. So I support these new rentals, especially the ones that have commercial storefront. When you have a local business, it engages people in their community. They're not just living and leaving, they're hanging out. And that's one of the things I really like about this project. More rentals in the neighborhood, and I know it's odd because this would be competing with me, but it is heartbreaking when people are messaging you, have you made a decision? Have you picked somebody? Is there anything else we can do? It's really heartbreaking. So I I support this 100%.
Thank you very much, Nick. You do have a question from a councillor, Councilor DeGenova.
Thanks so much, Nick. I was just in reviewing some of the the numbers that I'm seeing here and listening to your comments, I happen to like, I have to say, although this is is rental, this is a perfect candidate for affordable homeownership under B C Housing's program. Is that a program you'd like to see more of, although we're considering rental here? And I appreciate that you've been very upfront and open about, you know, what industry you're with, and this is, again, some of the work that you do, but I'm just wondering, you know, a program that offers a second mortgage or that down payment for some people, would you like to see more of that that kind of bridges the rental?
I'm I'm sorry, part of your message cut out. So could you, your question, sorry, can you repeat it?
I'll try and be, I'll try and be more concise. Although although this this is helping some people, do you, are you asking for or hoping for more affordable homeownership as we would see under the B C Housing program, where they kind of vet people and offer them that down payment through a second mortgage at a very low interest rate?
So I'm just going to pause you there, Councilor DeGenova. Unfortunately, we just we just need to keep questions directly related to the merit of this application. This application does not involve affordable. This is not a debate. I'm asking you just to stay on.
I am staying on topic, and I was very much speaking about this project.
No, there's no component of this project that involves affordable homeownership. So I'm just going to ask you to steer your question. Councilor DeGenova, you're either going to respond to me as chair and keep your questions directed, or we're going to move on to the next councillor. Your time is already, your time is paused, Councilor DeGenova, and it's been paused for 15 seconds. So please continue. We need to stay on track here tonight. We've got a lot to do.
But thank you. I was actually, and I had prefaced my question to that, but I'm wondering, because there is a gap between rental for people who, as you had mentioned, Nick, are trying to just afford to to survive in the city, but have this this goal towards affordable homeownership. I'm wondering, do you think that these projects are good, but we also need to consider more than just projects like this, but on the spectrum?
Chair, point of procedure, we are really straying outside of the merits of this application, which my understanding is our requirement for public hearings.
Councilor Kirby Young, that would be, is it a point of order or point of procedure?
It would be a point of order, I believe.
Could my time be more, Chair?
I'm just going to ask you to reference the section of the procedure bylaw.
Eight point seven. Hold on. Well, I mean, 6.1 also, in terms of gesticulating and interrupting the chair. But I'll stick with 6.1 for now.
So you'd like me to rule on?
Yeah, I was just hoping that we could just guide back to the specific merits of this application, which is my understanding is public hearing requirement.
So I take your point. Thank you very much, Councilor Kirby Young. And Councilor DeGenova, I'm going to ask you to ask a very specific question related to this application, or we're going to have to move on to the next councillor on the queue.
Thank you, and I will, because I'm very concerned by some of the tactics that are being used against me, and I'm concerned that they legally could overturn a quasi-judicial body in a public hearing, as I've seen before. So thank you, Chair. And seeing that my time has started at 15 extra seconds on that, I'm going to ask ask the speaker, do you feel that this is important in the spectrum of housing, but what I'm hearing you say about homeownership is this is not the only spectrum of housing, so we could approve this project specifically, but that shouldn't keep council from continuing to explore affordable homeownership options? Is that what I'm hearing from you, that we should explore both?
Well, there's two things. Affordability housing is going to happen when you have more supply and when you have quicker projects.
Okay. And you'd like to see that happen both for this project and rental, but if this project were to be in affordable homeownership, you would have supported that as well. Is that correct?
Of course.
Thank you very much for answering my question. I'm so sorry that there was so much debate over me asking it.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Kirby Young. You do have more questions, please, if you would stay on the line. Thank you very much, Nick. Councilor Kirby Young, are you on the queue for questions?
No, I was just done for the the legal question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So that does, that brings us to the end of your questions. Thank you very much for speaking to council.
One one final statement, I'd like to, I'd like to bring the honorability of this developer, both Strand and Le Carnet, for their community support.
Nick, unfortunately, that's well, Nick, I'm sorry, this is, that's well outside of the process here that needed to be in your initial comments. I'm very sorry to interrupt you, but I'll have to, this is, this is the time where we get to have councils ask questions of speakers, so I'll have to move us along. But we do appreciate, and you're welcome to email, no, sorry, you can't email, yes, you're welcome to email council any additional thoughts.
Terrific. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, great. So next, we're going to move on to our next speaker on the line, Speaker Number Eight, Tara Laker.
Yes, good evening. I had a question about traffic control. I have lived in this neighborhood for 15 years, and I previously lived near 30th and Prince Albert Street, which is very close to this, where this development is being proposed. And I lived there at a time when there was some social housing that existed in between 30th and 29th, along Fraser Street and Prince Albert Street, and that development was torn down, and the letting and Lettingham McAllister built the new development that exists there that includes no frills, Shopper's Drug Mart, there was a Starbucks there, but that's closed, and it was, it's quite a substantial development. One thing that I can note about this neighborhood is that it's very family-oriented, as many speakers have already said. I have grown up in Vancouver. I grew up in the Dunbar area, and this particular neighborhood in Vancouver is very reminiscent for me of the Dunbar neighborhood when I was growing up. And there are many children out on the street and on the sidewalks, riding bikes, skateboards with their families. There are many people walking dogs. It's a, it is a busy neighborhood, and it's very walkable. One thing that I did notice, however, when the development went in by Lettingham McAllister, is that there was a significant increase in traffic within on our residential streets. And that is concerning to me because I think it it degrades our residential neighborhoods, and and it also creates safety concerns. The the speeds at which I've seen people drive down Prince Albert Street are concerning to me, considering how many children and animals live in the neighborhood. I have reached out to the city on quite a number of occasions, asking them to consider traffic control in the neighborhood, none of which was ever responded to. I note that along Fraser Street itself, the traffic lights that have been installed, in my opinion, don't really work because the public parking area for Dean McAllister development that allows people to access no frills and shoppers is off of 29th, and there's no, there's no street, oh, no, it's off of 30th, and there's no street light on 30th. So it creates this huge backlog of cars along 30th Avenue for people trying to turn, and so what they do is that they then subsequently turn down 30th and start driving through the residential streets. And I'm concerned with increasing densification without any actual traffic plan for this additional project, that it's just going to further cause significant problems for the for these residential neighborhoods that are essentially right beside these these areas. And I'm just curious if city council has had any consideration of creating traffic measures to try and protect these residential areas.
Okay, is that the end of your comments?
That's the end of my comments, and it is also a question.
Okay, great. So the way that this works is is your your comments have been noted and questions noted, and it will be up to councillors to reflect them back to staff when that part of the process is underway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for taking the time to share your questions with council, and we'll be moving on to our next speaker. Speaker Number, Speaker Number 10, James Potter.
Can you hear me all right?
Hi, we can hear you. You have 10 minutes to speak to council, and you can please go ahead and start now.
Hi. My name is James Potter.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Speaker, we have, there's just an interruption. Yes, point of privilege, Councilor DeGenova.
You just said the speaker in 10 minutes. I thought it was five.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, sorry for the interruption. You're welcome to start now, Speaker.
I'm sure it will last just a minute, but I think we'll be okay on that time at that point. My name's James Potter. I do live in the neighborhood, just a couple blocks away from the development on 26th as well. Concerned about 10 minutes, but I think we need to go on mute there, whoever's calling their dog. Yeah, so just to start again, I have lived in the neighborhood for for five years. Similar to comments made by other folks, I did and was attracted to that neighborhood in terms of the space and very much the family nature of it. I did grow up on the west side of Vancouver and had fond memories of a childhood spent playing at local parks, playing on the local streets with children, and kind of growing up with a lot of children and families and dogs in the area, and really enjoyed that moving to Fraser Street. I am a huge supporter of diverse and affordable neighborhoods. I think that is a huge rich part of the city that you're able to to grow up in these neighborhoods there, diverse from income, ethnicity, age, whatever it may be standpoint, and I think that adds to rich fabric of the city. I think looking at this project specifically, obviously to the extent that it provides affordability in a neighborhood that has gone through the roof in terms of property values and expense over the past few years, I think would be very important. I also think this project does something quite critical for that area of Fraser Street, which, you know, there are a few blocks there that are quite under-maintained and dilapidated, and this particular project would provide a very good connection between a couple blocks of Fraser that I think would really support the growth of the commercial offerings there as well as, you know, restaurants and whatnot. And and that's one of the reasons why I'm hugely in favor of the diversity that it provides, sorry, the density that it provides as well. Because I believe that with density, you know, with more customers will come greater businesses and greater services in the area. I do applaud the developer for their tenacity and patience in the permitting of this project, because I do believe that, you know, the greatest challenge to affordability in Vancouver is the supply, and the greatest challenges to the stock of supply that we have are our own costs and bylaws that we put in our way. So I do encourage them to keep on pursuing more projects like this and seeing them through to completion. Just speaking to my own scenario for a second, I am trying to build my own new house in the neighborhood with rental. I had to have a tenant move out over a year ago when I when I started the project, and that has been a vacancy for a year now, taking some housing stock out of the market, as I have been tied up in permitting myself. And similar to the outdoor comments, I've also tried to have outdoor space attached to my unit that I am developing, and I've had that turned down on a technicality. So I do appreciate some of the comments that have been given thus far, and again, applaud the developer for not just trying to build more rental stock, but also make rental stock that is attractive and desirable with outdoor space, plants, and whatnot. In terms of lessons for the project and concerns, I did spend some time living in London, England, about seven years ago. I'd also looked at real estate around Main Street, and I think there are some lessons learned that the city can take from how those two different, very different areas on opposite sides of the world are able to develop dense neighborhoods. You know, I think, you know, London, being quite a dense city, has done a good job in having some consistent enforcement of bylaws, whether it's parking bylaws or whether it's just general cleanliness and upkeep and consistent enforcement of bylaws that already exist. I think they have done a particularly good job with densifying, or rather, increasing usability of local park spaces to minimize land use. to minimize land use conflicts between dog owners, people with pets, you know, schools and whatnot. I think the city has done that in some areas, if we look to some of their urban parks around Yountown and whatnot. But I think there's a lot to be desired in terms of the park development around Main and Fraser and elsewhere in terms of the usability of that space, given that it is limited. And then also just seconding what the last caller was commenting on, the traffic flows. As I said, you know, I have three months old, and a two-and-a-half-year-old. I fear when they walk out the front door, at least the one that can walk, you know, that they are going to step the wrong direction out of the street and have a car coming down a side street, you know, clipping the mirrors of the parked cars at 60 kilometers an hour. And, you know, that's not a neighborhood that I want to raise my children in. So I do encourage the city to step in and take action in terms of the traffic flows. So just in summary, huge supporter of the project. Terms around the shared space.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That is the end of your time. And there are no questions, but we do appreciate you calling in and expressing your views tonight. So that council does bring us to the end of our registered speakers list. So I'm going to now make a... Is this a first call? Yes, second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So clerks, I'll ask, do we have any additional speakers on the line at this time, or in chambers?
No, and no.
Okay, thank you. So this is the third call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So we will take a five-minute recess to give callers a chance to call in, and we will come back at 8:37. Okay, I'll just, clerks, check in, call this meeting back to order?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bly. I'm just checking. We have no one in the chamber wishing to speak, and we have no one on the line.
Thank you very much. Seeing there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking for the questions of staff, and then making a decision. So does the applicant have any closing comments?
I have no further comments, and thank you again for everybody's time this evening.
And thank you very much. Does staff have any closing comments?
I have no closing comments, some stuff.
Thank you. And does council have any questions of staff? And Commissioner Kirby Young? Commissioner Kirby Young?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I do have one question in responding to the one concern that was raised by one of the speakers with respects to traffic management. And I wonder if staff could just quickly recap any traffic management measures being taken with respect to the additional residents anticipated at the site?
Rosemary Drastico, it's from Engineering, will answer this question.
Thanks for your question. So as conditions of enactment, this development's responsible for a suite of transportation improvements related to their site that includes things like new widened sidewalks and boulevards along the street frontages, street trees where space permits, curb and gutter, particularly on East 28th when it exists, upgraded street lighting, as well as pedestrian improvements like intersection lighting, pedestrian lane crossings, as well as speed humps in the lane, which will all contribute to that traffic calming effect in the neighborhood.
Okay, so there are traffic calming measures in place. And staff and I expecting necessarily any impacts on congestion further to what we heard in terms of what are the speakers raised?
Yeah, so the development's pretty well cited to encourage reduced vehicle trips. They brought a excellent proximity to frequent transit network cycling infrastructure. I'll also add that the applicant did submit a consultant transportation study. So that was looked at in detail as well. Our staff reviewed that. The study identifies that, you know, while there have been some increases in traffic over time, that's been commensurate with the development expected in the neighborhood. The study identified that the roadway operations and intersection operations adjacent to the site are currently operating within acceptable limits and are anticipated to continue operating within those acceptable limits with the addition of this development.
Okay, thank you for that fulsome response. I'm satisfied. And Chair, I'm happy to move the recommendations, seeing no one else on the queue. Thank you very much, Commissioner Kirby Young. I heard Council Boyle first, so we'll move to the main queue. And I see Commissioner Kirby Young, you moved the motion. Did you want to speak to it first? Or I see Council Swanson on the queue.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak very briefly and just say I'm happy to vote in full support of this. It was nice to hear from neighbors in the area that are welcoming the new neighbors and the additional density and the recognition that there is a real need and a gap in terms of a sufficient supply of available rental units, quality rental units, and noting that 46% of these are family-friendly, which I thought was positive. I also think that Fraser Street has a wonderful developing public realm. So happy to hear about the widened sidewalks and the addition of commercial that supports complete communities because I know that in some areas we have had a mess, but we've only had housing, but we haven't necessarily had the local amenities located nearby. So I think that this will contribute to a very kind of complete self-contained community that people can find their daily needs in. And it's 100 rental units in a great area. So I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirby Young. Counselor Carr?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And to, in support of the comments made by Commissioner Kirby Young, I'll just expand without repeating. I'm particularly impressed in this application by the conditions of approval that have come through to increase the outdoor amenity space. I mean, this is 100 units, but it's really, I think, being approached as a, you know, wonderfully supportive community of people. I love the maximization of street animation, public seating, patios, benches, landscaping, planters, weather protection, child play areas, shaded and sunny seating. I mean, these are places outdoors for cooking and eating. You know, this is where the community building, and I'm just very appreciative of those particular conditions of approval, along with adding more trees, the passive design and passive strategies, and the provision of cooling in the building without consideration of last summer's heat dome is very essential. So very, you know, very appreciative of the design that has been incorporated and that will be incorporated into this building.
Thank you very much, Counselor Carr. Counselor Swanson?
Yeah. My thought is basically, it would be nice if people who earned under about 120 grand could benefit from all those things that Counselor Carr just listed. I think if the city is going to give a developer almost five times more density than is on the site now, as well as commercial, which is more profitable than residential, a whole huge seven lots worth of commercial, I think we ought to extract some affordability. And otherwise, we're not meeting our equity goals that we talk about so much. So I'm going to have a little protest, vote against this. I'm sure it'll pass, but I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson, Counselor Domenado.
Thanks, Chair. I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. And so like Counselor Kirby Young and Counselor Carr, I'm supportive of this proposal. I won't repeat what they said about the benefits. Where I will note that I want to pick up on one thread that Counselor Carr identified around community building. I think we heard from speakers, there's some community support for this, but they spoke to a number of aspects of this proposal, not just the rental units, but the attention to the streetscape, the public realm, the retail as being a benefit to community building. But also, this builder also pays a lot of attention to that and how important it is to build community. It's, this isn't about building buildings, it's about building homes for people. And as we heard from one of the speakers, there's a demand for a variety of people looking, that they intend, maybe they're looking for homeownership, but this is a segue. And so they're maybe planning for the longer term. I hear one speaker talk about that. But also the need for international students. And I know through conversations I've had, there are some concerns around international students not finding safe housing, and they end up in unsafe situations. And so there's a variety of benefits for community, but I'm happy to support it. And I think there's a lot of positives to this project.
Thank you, Counselor Domenado. Counselor Boyle?
Thanks. I won't repeat a lot of what's been said. Also support it. Glad to see more rental housing everywhere in the city. And just wanted to add how important I think it is that we be building new rental housing where there isn't currently secure rental housing. And we often see this tension where what's being proposed is just rental in place of existing affordable rental. And that creates a lot more challenges. A key part of what we need to be doing is what we're doing here, which is building new rental where it doesn't already exist to expand that, those options across the city. And so one more reason that I think this is a project to support, and I certainly will be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. Seeing no one else on the queue, I'm going to take us to a vote. And that motion passes with one in opposition, Counselor Swanson. Okay, thank you very much to our staff. On item three, we're going to be moving to item four, clerks. I just want to check, do you need a few moments before we transition to the next item?
Chair Bly, yes, I'm just seeing staff exiting from the last item and coming in for this new item. So if you could give us three minutes, we should be able to get set up.
Okay, we'll take a three-minute recess. We'll be back at 8:52. Okay, we'll take a three-minute recess. We'll be back at eight fifty-two. Just wait for a few more councillors to turn their videos back on and we'll get going. That's great, thank you. So clerks, I'll check in and we can bring the meeting back to order?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you very much. So welcome back. We're going to continue on with our agenda tonight. Item four, CD one rezoning fourteen oh six to fourteen ten East King Edward Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item four? Seeing and hearing none, I'll ask now if the clerk will please read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency to Easton fourteen oh six to fourteen ten East King Edward Avenue from Residential District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a thirteen-story mixed-use building with one oh nine social housing units, a building height of fifty-one metres with additional height for rooftop amenity and a floor space ratio of eleven point oh seven are proposed. The general manager planning urban design sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since we refer to public hearings, thirteen pieces of correspondence and support, nineteen in opposition, and three pieces in, you know, for other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to three thirty PM today.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna move, I'm actually gonna go ahead and do my first call for speakers. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one-
Can can I just point of procedure share?
Yes, councillor DeGenova?
Is there a presentation on this item? Because I'd like to hear it.
There is. It's in my script to review, to do the first call now. So I'm just gonna follow that. And then we're gonna hear from-
Before a presentation and questions to staff and the applicant?
Councillor DeGenova, I take your point, okay?
Thank you.
We need to do three calls. Okay, so I'm just gonna finish this call because those those any speakers to this item can join now and we can hear the presentation. So please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Okay, so we do have Chi Chan, rezoning planner with the rezoning centre, planning urban design and sustainability here to present the application. I just want to confirm, we've got staff clerks available?
Yes, Chi Chan is here and he's just about to start.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening Chair and Council. My name is Chi Chan. I'm the rezoning planner for this social housing application, which can be considered under the Kensington Cedar Cottage Community Vision. The site shown here in the red, in red in the middle of the slide is comprised of two lots. It's located at the southeast corner of Knight Street and King Edward Avenue and is zoned RM one N. The site is currently undeveloped. It is surrounded by RM one low-rise residential zoning that was changed as part of the implementation of the two thousand four Kingsway and Knight neighbourhood housing area plan, though much of the surrounding properties remain single detached housing. The site to the north is zone CD one, and it's developed with six to seventeen story mixed-use buildings in a complex known as the King Edward Village. An anchor grocery store and the Kensington branch of the Vancouver Public Library are located in this development. King Crest Park is located directly to the south. The site is well-served by frequent transit service located directly on the number twenty-two Knight and the twenty-five King Edward bus routes and one block south of the nineteen Kingsway bus. There are several bike routes within several blocks of the site, as well as parks, shops, and services in the King Edward, King Edward Village and all along Kingsway. The Kensington Cedar Cottage Community Vision permits consideration of rezoning for social housing projects without further planning study. In twenty seventeen, council approved the Housing Vancouver Strategy, which identifies the need to coordinate actions with senior governments, nonprofit and indigenous partners to deliver housing for the lowest income households. The strategy also identifies the need to create new, purpose-built, self-contained social and supportive housing in all neighbourhoods of the city. As a city of reconciliation, the city commits to form a sustained relationship of mutual respect and understanding with local First Nations and the urban indigenous community. The proposed project will be operated by an indigenous housing provider and will include culturally relevant healing and wellness services. Council adopted an equity framework in July twenty twenty-one that provides guidance on embedding equity into our work, both internally and externally. Equity addresses systemic inequities that benefit and favors some groups and often disproportionately impacts indigenous, Black, people of colour and cultural communities. Through policy and regulation, the city can work with our partners to reduce systemic barriers to housing and prioritize accessible and safe housing for marginalised groups that experience housing instability. This table shows the stock of purpose-built supportive housing that exists in Vancouver in twenty twenty-two. There are seven hundred and twenty units of temporary modular housing in eleven buildings. These buildings were deployed in only a temporary capacity by BC Housing and will be on-site for five to ten years. They're newer buildings which opened between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. There are in additional three thousand units in fifty-five buildings of purpose-built supportive housing across the city. These self-contained homes with supports provide lasting, stable housing for residents. The average age of these buildings is about twenty years old, and the buildings range in size from nine to one hundred and fifty-four units, with the median building size being approximately eighty units. The city has a long track record of working collaboratively with senior governments on tackling the housing and homelessness crisis. This map shows where partnerships have resulted in new, purpose-built supportive homes across the city since twenty ten. In the summer of twenty twenty, the city, province and federal government signed the most recent memorandum of understanding that commits to delivering a minimum of three hundred purpose-built, self-contained, permanent supportive homes using modular construction methods under the Permanent Modular Supportive Housing Initiative, otherwise we call PEMSHI. This application is one of those sites that would be developed under this initiative. Housing Vancouver Strategy is to partner with senior levels of government to add forty-one hundred new social housing units with supports to be rented at the shelter component of income assistance by twenty twenty-seven. To date, seven hundred and sixty-nine of these have been approved, but as I previously mentioned, approximately seven hundred and twenty of them are temporary modular housing. The demand for this type of housing remains high, as evidenced by more than two thousand people experiencing homelessness, according to the twenty twenty Metro Vancouver homeless count. Projects like the one being presented here to this evening are an important step towards achieving our Housing Vancouver targets to create pathways out of homelessness. Supportive housing buildings have twenty-four seven staff embedded in the building to provide onsite services, support services for the residents. This slide shows the range of services that may ultimately be offered at this location by both the nonprofit operator, in-reach services in by community partners, or by Vancouver Coastal Health. Building operations, programs and services are funded by BC Housing and provided by the nonprofit operators, and it may change and adapt over time as residents and community needs change. This application was submitted on October nineteen twenty twenty-one. It proposes a thirteen-story passive house certified residential building with a partial fourteenth-floor indoor amenity space constructed using modular construction techniques. A building height of a hundred and sixty-seven feet and up to a hundred and seventy-seven feet to accommodate the rooftop amenity area and an FSR of eleven point oh seven are recommended. It includes a hundred and nine studio rental units. These units are for individuals because this is where the greatest need is for those experiencing homelessness. Although it is a known undercount, the Metro Van Homeless Count consistently found that only three percent of respondents were with children. BC Housing has indicated that for the PEMSHI sites, the objective is to maximize the delivery of new homes for single individuals. Adult family members who desire to be together could be accommodated in the same building and each have their own secured rental home. This project will create approximately eighty-two direct Canadian construction jobs. This project has an urban indigenous focus. The building's design process included engagement with indigenous stakeholders, Makola Development Services, Vancouver Native Housing Society, and the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre. An indigenous operator has been selected by BC Housing to operate this building. And the building's architectural expression provides opportunities for future indigenous art, murals and sculptures, and the expression of elements from the Coast Salish First Nations, as can be seen on the left. Its amenity spaces, notably the rooftop amenity space shown on the right, have been designed to support indigenous traditional, cultural and spiritual knowledge activities. This project is also aligned with the city's commitment as a city of reconciliation. Approximately fifty percent of the units would rent at the shelter component of income assistance. In BC, this rate continues to be three hundred and seventy-five per month for an individual. The balance of the units would rent at would rent at rents geared to income, or RGI, and tenants would pay thirty percent of their annual income for rent. These rents can range from approximately three seventy-five up to a maximum of seven hundred and nineteen a month upon initial teneting based on twenty twenty-two values. This would serve individuals with an annual income range from fifteen thousand to twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. Flexibility is provided so that if an RGI resident's income increases, they would not need to relocate so long as their annual income does not exceed the maximum BC Hills rate. These rental rates would be secured through a housing agreement and section two nineteen covenant registered on title that prohibits the stratification and separate sale of individual units. Staff support this affordability mix as it aligns with the intent of the MOU and provides homes for very low-income residents who are able to live more independently. It also enables the operator to offer a greater diversity of housing and to meet the needs of very low-income tenants as they may change. The applicant hosted a pre-application engagement events in spring twenty twenty-one, and these included neighbourhood dialogue sessions, community walkabouts and an online comment period. Following the submission of the rezoning application, a city hosted virtual open house was held between November fifteenth and December twelfth twenty twenty-one. A total of a hundred and twenty-six submissions were received during the city's public comment period. Support was expressed for social housing, the building height, density en massing, and for passive house sustainability measures. Concerns were expressed related to the scale and design of the building, safety, parking and availability of community amenities and supports. Staff have reviewed the proposal and concluded that the proposed height and density are appropriate at the arterial intersection of Knight Street and King Edward Avenue. The building is surrounded by streets, a lane and King Crest Park, which ensures open space around the proposal. There are also buildings of a similar height in the mixed-use development to the north. Urban design conditions are provided in appendix B of the staff report requesting a stronger public realm interface and to provide more windows and transparency at grade. Staff assessment of the proposal is that, subject to the design conditions in appendix B, it represents a balanced approach to delivery of much-needed, secured, affordable rental units in a transit-supported location in the context of available government funding from the province and federal government to address the homeless crisis. Regarding expressed safety concerns, studies and research show that communities and cities benefit on financial, social and equity objectives by providing people who were experiencing homelessness with homes and support services. Vehicle parking in this project will comply with the parking bylaw. The location is also well-served by transit being one block, within one block of three translink frequent transit bus routes. And with with respect to community amenities and support, there are services proposed to be offered in the building, and there are existing services throughout the city. The level of services to be provided in the building will be established when the building is being tenanted and determined based on the needs of the future tenants. In conclusion, this proposal can be considered under the Kensington Cedar Cottage Community Vision. It also advances the city's supportive housing policy goals and key equity and reconciliation commitments. The proposal and recommended form of development represent an appropriate urban design response to the site and context. Staff support this application subject to the conditions contained in appendix B. The planning team, housing and homelessness services from ACCS, BC Housing staff and the operator are here and available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Chair, they're just coming to the podium.
Thank you very much clerk.
Good evening Chair and members of council. My name is Heather Oland, and I am the Director of Non-Market Housing Development for the City of Vancouver. On behalf of the applicant team, we would like to thank you for your consideration of the proposal to develop one hundred and nine social housing homes with supports on the city site located at fourteen oh six and fourteen ten East King Edward Avenue. Non-market housing development team plays an important role in achieving the Housing Vancouver goals for the development of social housing on this and other city sites. Our small but nimble team readies city sites for the development of new social housing. This includes the identification of sites suitable for residential development in the city's existing real estate portfolios, as well as the acquisition of new sites. Once sites are identified, we conduct pre-development activities to assess potential development risks, for example, grade, environmental status, as well as geotechnical, density and servicing capacity. In this case, the East King Edward site was already owned by the city and is considered appropriate for residential development from a technical perspective. We also work to secure partnerships with senior government and funders so that social housing projects are affordable to residents of Vancouver and are financially sustainable over the long term. This includes capital funding and, in some cases, ongoing operational subsidies to keep rents affordable. For this project, we had early support from both BC Housing and CMHC to advance the King Edward site to this milestone. And we are grateful. Housing and CMHC to advance the King Edward site to this milestone, and we are grateful for their partnership. We foster partnerships with nonprofit operators and service providers, like the Vancouver Native Housing Society and the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society, who will operate the proposed buildings once completed. Their input into the design is essential, so that social housing located on city sites provides safe, secure, and affordable housing for the people of Vancouver. Finally, we assist our partners through regulatory submissions, such as rezoning applications for social housing projects on city sites, and provide development management support in an effort to streamline and expedite the delivery of homes in our city. On the screen, you will see a couple of examples of the many social housing developments we have helped to deliver with B.C. Housing and CMHC, including Hummingbird Place at West First Avenue with PHS Community Services, and the future development of 1190 Burrard with the Community Land Trust and Community. I am pleased to introduce James Forsyth, the Director of Regional Development, Lower Mainland, from B.C. Housing, who is joining us remotely and will be presenting the details of tonight's proposal. Will Valenciano, also of B.C. Housing, will be coming to the podium to change the slides for James. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. Before we go through the slides, I'd like to take the opportunity to have a couple of people speak. First is Richard George from the Vancouver Native Housing Society. Richard?
Good evening, Chair and members of council. First, I'd like to acknowledge the unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh Nations. I'd like to thank them for having cared for this land that is now caring for me and my family. My name is Richard George, and I am the President of the Board of Directors for the Vancouver Native Housing Society, a position that I've held for the past 16 years. Vancouver Native Housing Society's mission is to provide safe, secure, and affordable housing for low-income indigenous and non-indigenous individuals and families here in Vancouver. VNHS has been operating as a housing society since 1984 and currently manages a portfolio of over 900 units, which houses approximately 8% of Vancouver's urban indigenous population. Through our housing portfolio, VNHS has a range of studio, 1, 2, 3, and 4 bedroom units, with operations that cover family housing, housing for people experiencing homelessness, or who are at risk of being homeless, seniors, women fleeing violence, youth, and individuals in need of supportive housing. 1406 King Edward will include both supportive housing units as well as affordable rental units for people on very low income, who are able to live independently. VNHS' broad experience operating a range of housing options aligns well with this model of housing. In addition, for this important project, VNHS has partnered with the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society to provide the high-quality, safe, affordable, and accessible housing for Vancouver's indigenous population. This partnership builds off of each other's organization's strengths to deliver both housing and programming to tenants, which will support and enrich the cultural, mental, spiritual, and physical state of the residents. Examples of such planned supports include laundry service, meal programs, health and wellness programming, life skills, training, and education supports, programs that connect residents to culture, community, and more. Finally, indigenous representation in both the programming as well as the form and character of the space will contribute to the resident's sense of belonging, which directly leads to better health and wellness outcomes, and the residents of 1406 King Edward will gain a shared sense of belonging, which creates a vital, well-connected communities, fostering meaningful connections and relationships. We look forward for your support of this proposal to rezone 1406 King Edward Avenue. This concludes my opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Richard. I'd like to also ask Kayla Wong from the Aboriginal Friendship Centre to come up and share some words.
Can say hello and good evening. I would like to start by acknowledging the land that I'm speaking to you from is on the unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations. My name is Kayla Wong. I'm a proud member of the Ochappois First Nations located in White Wood, Saskatchewan. I'm equally proud to be Tösön Chinese from my father's side. I am the Program Administrator for the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society, and I'm pleased to be here with you at this important project milestone, and would like to take a few moments to share with you why this rezoning proposal deserves your support. The Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society has been providing services, resources, and programming for the urban Aboriginal community since 1963. The centre has become a gateway into the city for indigenous peoples and the community at large. In 2021 alone, the centre tracked over 70,000 points of contact with community members. Through this important community-based work, VAFCS understands firsthand the need for the housing proposed at 1406 King Edward. The need for affordable, suitable, and safe housing for indigenous residents in the Vancouver area is well documented. For example, the Rental Housing Index reports that 53% of indigenous households in Vancouver are spending over 30% of their monthly income on housing, putting them in a housing core need. The Vancouver Native Housing Society and the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society's vision is to provide an inclusive and supportive space that empowers individuals' right to cultural programming and supports. More importantly, our shared vision is to create indigenous safe housing, which is a human right. By creating a safe and welcoming space, VAFCS and VNHS are responding to a need for housing operated by and for urban indigenous people. This is what true reconciliation and equity means. The new homes at 1406 King Edward are an important opportunity to create a space where people from all walks of life can come together and feel accepted, and more importantly, valued. By providing a range of housing options and supports, such as meals, life skills, training, and access to culture, these community members will be empowered to continue their housing journey. This building is also being designed to reflect indigenous culture, as well as the values of inclusiveness and belonging at the heart of the partnering societies, and will positively contribute to the unique character of the King Edward and Knight Street neighbourhood centre in the Kensington Cedar Cottage neighbourhood. Now with the planning and design underway, we look forward to the future and to opening day when the residents will walk through the door to their new homes. Hi, hi, thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. So, chairs, councillors, staff, and members of public, I am James Forsyth, your Director of Regional Development, B.C. Housing. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh Nations, for which we live and work and where this project is located. Will, can you advance the next slide? So this project precipitated from an MOU between the City of Vancouver, B.C. Housing, and CMHC. This agreement, by all three levels of government, is a unified acknowledgement of some very serious challenges we are collectively facing with respect to the people at risk of homelessness and people in need of affordable housing. As part of this partnership, the city will provide suitable land for projects. CMHC and B.C. Housing provide capital funding. B.C. Housing will provide long-term operational funding. Next slide. So why do we sign this MOU? Well, first, we are in a housing crisis. This is across a broad spectrum of incomes, and seems to be a theme for every rezoning application that comes to council. This project seeks to address the deepest levels of affordability. This includes households earning less than $30,000 per year, and to be honest, this is where the greatest need is. Next slide. Second, we are still in a homelessness crisis. Even as the COVID pandemic comes to an end, youth, seniors, and individuals are still struggling with homelessness. In fact, in the most recent homeless account, there was noted 2,095 individuals that were living on the street or in sheltered locations. These people need homes. They need supportive housing. Next slide. The solution that is before you today is a step in the right direction. This project would not only be possible, this product would not be possible without the capital and operating funding from B.C. Housing through the Supportive Housing Fund, and the capital funding from CMHC, and the land contributions from the City of Vancouver. The product includes 109 studio homes with supports for people who are living here. These are self-contained units with their own kitchens and bathrooms. There will also be a mix of accessible units and amenities to support the people making this building their home. Next slide. A critical aspect for any of our supportive housing projects is to create a sense of place. Working with the Friendship Centre and Vancouver Native Housing, we have identified key cultural elements that will be important for the success of this project. This includes support spaces, a commercial kitchen for teaching, outdoor spaces for reflection and gathering. Next slide, please. This project will address a range of housing needs. We have supportive housing and deeply affordable rent geared to income housing. Everyone living in the supportive housing units will be paying rent. You'll be at shelter component of income assistance, which is currently $375 per month. For the affordable rental units, rents will be based on the individual's incomes, which result in rents ranging from $375 to $719 per month, and are based on our annually published housing income limits. Next slide. So can anyone guess what the most important part of supportive housing is? It's the supports. While people living in this building will have self-continuance, providing wraparound services are key to creating stabilized environments for individuals. This includes things as simple as laundry or meals, medical care, programs to connect with culture, skills training, and mental health services are all part of these wraparound supports. Next slide, please. And we know that supportive housing works. It is a solution that works to break the cycle of homelessness. We see that people living in supportive housing gain stability. They see improvements in their overall well-being and physical health, and most importantly, they are able to better integrate and contribute to their community. Next slide, please. I wish I could take credit for the successes in supportive housing. However, the Friendship Centre and Vancouver Native Housing Society are the ones who are going to deserve the credit for this project. Both societies bring on-the-ground experience in delivering housing and working with vulnerable populations. They have the track record to prove it. Next slide, please. And lastly, I want to emphasize how we got here. Community input and engagement is critical to our success. We met with the neighbourhood and stakeholders before submitting an application for rezoning. Listening to the community is key to understanding the challenges before us. It allows us to proactively create solutions, but it doesn't stop there. Once the application was submitted, we continued to receive valuable feedback and have fulsome engagement and commentary from the public and city staff. It allowed us to update the design, to address nuance, to refine, and to iteratively create a project that is before you today. My final point is that through our public input process, it's not going to end here. Our future relationships with the neighbourhood are key to the ongoing success of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you very much to the applicant team for that presentation. So we now have questions from councillors to staff or the applicant team, and of course, this is the only chance to ask questions to the applicant team in this process. So first, we have councillor Hardwick. Over to councillor Hardwick.
Thanks very much. I have a number of questions. My first one, and this would be to staff, is the building taller than King Edward Village that's located a block north across the street? Is it fair to call this a 13-story tower? The proposed floor heights are 11'7" for 3 to 12, while the first two levels have floor height of 14 feet. So I'm just trying to get a handle on how it aligns with King Edward Village up the block and across the street.
Thank you councillor for the question. Chi Chan, Rezoning Centre. The building height is approximately the same as the tall building in King Edward Village. There are 14 stories in this building. There are not anymore. You can only take the elevator to 14 stories.
Okay. So what's the urban design impact? It seems like there's almost no setback on Knight Street compared to the King Edward Village that has ample setback. A comment on setback from an urban design impact perspective, please.
Thank you councillor for the question. I'm going to direct that to GTAC Park, our urban designer. He is on the webex.
Hi, my name is Chi Tech Park, development planner with Current Planning. So the site is surrounded by other city-owned assets, such as the Knight Street, King Edward Avenue, as well as King Crest Park and the lane. These assets provide the much-needed volumetric spatial openness that we typically seek in the tower podium typology, where the podium provides the necessary volumetric relief. In addition, the site being located due north of the King Crest Park, it doesn't actually create any increased shadow impact on the park space or the public realm. The lane being the smallest of the public assets surrounding the site, the interface with the lane and the single-family dwelling may be the arguably most challenging. However, considering the future context based on the recent public adopted secure rental policy, which allows up to six-story form of development, it does provide better volumetric transition along that side.
Okay, so translated, that means that you're satisfied that the design impact of almost no setback on the Knight Street side is justifiable because of the other attributes?
Correct.
Okay, there was some commentary around the public consultation process, and I had noted that, our question, why were comments made by the public not posted on the Shape Your City website in the FAQ section, the frequently asked question? Can you talk a little bit more about the public consultation? Because it sounded very positive, but I've also had feedback that residents felt that there was some censorship involved.
Thank you councillor Hardwick for the question. Chi Chan, Rezoning Centre. So we followed our usual consultation process during the rezoning application phase. During a virtual open house that lasted four weeks on this application, any questions that were asked to staff were posted online with the staff response. However, we received comments from the beginning of the application up to about approximately February of this year, when we had to close comments to write the report, and comments are not posted online.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That's my questions.
Thank you councillor Hardwick. Councillor Carr?
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I only have one question, and that is to the applicant. That is, I don't really know of very many buildings. I can't think of any that we've approved that are at 14 floors, modular prefab. I'm wondering if you could just clarify, you know, what that form of construction is? I'm assuming it's, well, I don't know, 14 floors? Is it prefab? Is it mass timber as well? I'd appreciate just knowing the actual construction.
Thank you councillor for the question, Heather Oland. So the modular construction is prefabricated modular with steel, and this level of height has not been seen in Vancouver. There's a four-story modular existing in Vancouver, but there are other examples throughout the world, Calgary, Brooklyn, Los Angeles, London, ranging from five stories to 44 stories.
That's very cool. Yeah, I hadn't heard.
That's very cool. Yeah, I hadn't heard that high at modular. So thank you for clarifying that. That's my only question. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Carr, councillor Swanson.
Is this going to be a pet-friendly building?
Councillor Swanson, Chi Chan, rezoning planner. Yes, the applicant has confirmed it will be a pet-friendly building.
Okay, great. So the other question I have relates to it being on Knight Street, which is the worst polluting street in Canada. And we all know that pollution from traffic causes bad lung things and other health issues. And I see it's a passive building. Does this mean there's going to be air filters in there, or is something being done to preserve the residents from the pollution on Knight Street?
Thank you councillor for the question. Yes, this this building is being built to a passive house standard. And while passive house is primarily for energy efficiency, the main thrust is that it's going to be a super insulated building. And with the building envelope, it helps. It's going to be, there are mechanical systems in the building for heating and cooling that will allow people to keep their windows closed during busy times, busy traffic times.
Will there also be things like HEPA filters to make sure that the air that does come in is not bad for their health?
Thank you councillor for the question. I'm going to direct that question to the architect team.
Good evening. Thank you. Most mechanical systems have a level of filtration. And in our case, we're collecting the air from the roof, not at street level, so that will contribute to air quality.
Is there something that we can do as council tonight to direct staff to make sure that the air filtration is adequate in terms of keeping out the pollution from traffic? Or do you think it's just going to be done anyway?
Hi councillor, Paul Chang, senior development planner. Because this is a passive house building, we think that it's going to have very excellent indoor air quality because of the filtration that will, of all the air, being filtered mechanically. Furthermore, because of the fact that all the units will be heated and cooled mechanically, people won't, people living in these units won't have to open their windows to cool their unit at all. And that really, really helps with respect to blocking out the noise from the traffic of the arterials that this is beside. And also, it's also very helpful to make sure that any air pollutants from outside don't come into the unit through the windows as well. So it's a very nice byproduct of passive house. And it's, and it could be something that we should consider for most buildings or all buildings being built along arterials in the future.
That's what I was hoping. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Swanson. Councillor Fry?
Yeah, thanks. And I had similar questions to councillor Swanson, and I appreciate the answers around the air quality. We did get another question from the public regarding the fate of the mature tulip tree directly adjacent to the south of the site. I think it's in King Crest Park, but I'm not sure. Does staff have any sense of what would happen to this tulip tree if the construction will allow it to stay?
Thank you councillor Fry for that question. Chi Chan, rezoning planner. At this time, as is usual for all rezoning projects, the construction details are being worked out, will be worked out at the construction, at the DPN subsequent phases. Staff are working on it with the applicants. The applicant needs to make further submissions, more detailed submissions about that construction plan, and staff will be looking to minimize any impacts on the park. Typically, this would shift a lot of the construction as much as possible to the street.
Okay, thank you. The author of this notes that that the tulip tree is known as the canoe tree with the Métis people of the Midwest, and that perhaps if it does need to come down, it can be repurposed in some kind of artisan way. So, but hopefully the tree doesn't have to come down. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fry. And seeing councillor Kirby Young on the queue.
Just recognizing the hour, Chair, and the business we have in front of us, I wanted to move a motion to provide clarity for this evening. And I do have two options for council, so I'm just going to signal that ahead of time, but I would like to propose recognizing this is our last item of business, and we have very full council schedules and agendas ahead of us that we look to complete here speakers and complete debate and decision this evening. I'm hopeful that that will pass just because our schedules are so full. In the event that, for whatever reason, that's not the will of council, it would be my intention to move a subsequent motion that we complete hearing from speakers tonight and then refer debate and decision to a date to be advised by the clerk. But as I said, the motion that I'm moving first, and I'm hopeful council will support, is that we hear speakers and complete debate and decision and extend the meeting this evening in order to do so. So I'd like to put that on the floor.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Kirby Young. I'll be looking for a second.
Councillor Boyle, one second.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Boyle. So we have a motion on the floor. This motion is debatable, so I'm going to just move us to a main queue so that we can not confuse this question queue. So councillor De Genova, is that a holdover, or would you like to?
No, I'd like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm happy to support this motion. I did want to say that because my motives are not supporting a motion to extend the meeting, and previous meetings were impugned by another member of council, I'm happy to extend this. But as I've said, and I think it's really important, council, that as we try and encourage more people to run for office, especially young families and young parents, people who may have commitments in the morning, if any other councillor were on the queue or were to signal that they weren't able to stay because it is unanimous consent, I would vote with them because I wouldn't want them to be singled out unfairly, as I have been recently. So although I'm prepared to stay tonight, and I'm in the position that I can stay, I don't assume that everyone is. And for that reason, I just wanted to signal that if anyone went on the queue and they weren't, I would support them for that. Thank you.
Councillor Hardwick?
Mine is a point of information, Chair. Just as actually councillor De Genova stated, what if one of us, myself putting up my hand here, is unable to stay past 10 o'clock? I'm happy to vote in favor to support council extending, but it's problematic for me personally. So what would your advice be under those circumstances?
I appreciate the question councillor Hardwick. You are able just to let the clerks know that you've had to leave the meeting when, if you do need to leave the meeting past 10 o'clock, so you can vote to support this motion, and then it's well within your right to leave the meeting when you need to.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. I don't see anyone else on the queue, so let's do a recorded vote just for simplicity. So the motion on the floor is to extend past 10 o'clock to complete this item hearing from speakers as well as debate and decision tonight. Great. Council, that motion passes unanimously, so we will extend to complete this item. Thank you, everybody, and thank you councillor Kirby Young for moving that motion. Okay, so let's come back to where we are. Bear with me as I just move us back to our question queue, and I see councillor Kirby Young, you still have the floor.
No, I know we need to move through business, so I'm going to, I'm going to seize that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Domenado?
Thanks, Chair. Just a couple of questions to the applicants. First one being, can you just confirm for me that the original proposal contemplated 12 stories, not 14? Is that correct?
Staff?
Staff, did you get? They're just getting organized, Chair.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, no problem. I'll just stop your timer, councillor Domenado.
Sorry, I can respond to that. Thank you councillor for the question. The rezoning application that was submitted was for, it was for 14 stories. What you have before here is the same, essentially the same building.
Upwards of 14 stories. I'm just clarifying because I looked at some of the public engagement materials online, and it was citing 12 stories and 90 units. I just wanted to be clear on that point. And what prompted the additional stories?
Okay, thank you councillor for the question. I'm going to ask the architect to come up regarding the pre-application engagement materials.
Thank you.
Thank you. The pre-application engagement letter of inquiry did indeed note 12 stories. And our rezoning application is 14, as noted by Chi.
And it was, is there any, sorry, just before you go, was there any additional context for the increase in height and density? Just around that?
As you work through any application, refinements to wedge in all the, you know, bits that you need to run a building, had us looking at placing service rooms where they need to be on the roof and below grade, and looking at outdoor space and amenities, we arrived at 14. In addition to provision of units designed for this operating model for B C Housing.
Okay. I appreciate that. I do have a question around the amenity spaces and onsite programming. So noting there's an indoor and outdoor amenity space, are there any additional spaces? I'm counting this as one indoor, one outdoor, and it comes from having visited a handful of supportive housing developments recently that include more than that in terms of communal space, shared cooking areas, and so on. And so I'm just wondering if you could just provide a bit more detail on what's offered in terms of space? And then my second question is about onsite programming, again, speaking from having seen a few other supportive housing developments. So those are the two questions.
Thank you councillor for the question. Just very, very quickly, in terms of amenity spaces, yes, there is a rooftop indoor and outdoor amenity space, but at ground floor and second level, there's also dining room and common amenity rooms as well. In terms of the programming, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up and speak about other programming that's offered in the, in the, in the building.
Thank you for the question. So as was indicated during the proposal, there's a number of different amenity spaces, inside and outdoor spaces. There's decks on every second floor, I believe, as well as the office space, kitchen, and common spaces on the main floor. And laundry. Sorry, and laundry.
Yes, no, I appreciate that. I think the second question was around actual programming and services onsite. And if that, I don't know if that's the operator that could speak to that, or B C Housing?
Thank you.
Leslie Moblas, Managing Director of Housing and Homelessness Services. At this stage, we're looking at the form of development. I think the exact services, programming and supports that will be available for the tenants will be worked through as we work closer to the development permit stage. That is a contract that's funded by B C Housing and managed and directed with the operator that comes to us through the development approval process through the operations management plan. So it's at that point, I think that we are a bit more firm exactly in terms of what those supports and various programs look like at the site.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Domenado. Councillor De Genova?
I think that's a holdover.
Okay, thank you very much. So that does bring us to the end of our first round of questions to staff and the questions to the applicant team. So we're now going to hear from the public, and we do have a number of callers on the line. So I'm going to start with caller number one, our speaker number one, Vicky Potter.
Hello, I'm here.
Hi, great. We can hear you. You have five minutes to speak to council. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, members of council and staff and fellow neighbours. My name is Vicky Potter, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to the application for this supportive housing proposal. I'm in full support of this application. I've spent the last 15 years involved in street outreach efforts with homeless and vulnerable people through service with the Anglican Church, mostly on Vancouver's west side and in the West End. What this experience tells me is housing works. Providing safe, secure, decent housing is the number one difference that we can make for people living on our streets. Without that, our efforts to provide supportive services to deal with trauma, mental illness, addictions, and other social issues cannot be fully embraced or sustained. With decent housing, people are able to settle, learn to trust, and begin to rebuild lives with hope and purpose. I support the city's efforts to expand its pool of supportive housing throughout our city, serving the neediest in our city who live rough and/or precariously in neighborhoods throughout our city. I've had direct experience with supportive housing buildings in Dunbar, Kitsilano, South Vancouver, Falls Creek, and Main Street, from project conception to completion and well beyond. I've continued to interact with residents of these buildings and the operators who manage them years after the buildings opened. I've found the buildings to be well-run and well-maintained. In virtually all of the projects, negative impacts feared by neighbours before move-in haven't materialized, and I believe this is supported by Vancouver Police Department and other statistics. Of course, there's always room for improvement, and I encourage council and the province to increase supports offered in these buildings to reflect changing needs and demographics. I've reviewed the staff report for this project and support the project model and the choice of this site for a variety of reasons. First, I support that this is a permanent site, not temporary. I support the modular construction as it's proven to be a cheaper and quicker method to construct. We need as much of this housing as we can get in our city to deal with this crisis on our hands. I support that the location is in a community near library services, grocery stores, and on a bike route with good transit services. I support that it has an indigenous focus. As statistics show, that this population is disproportionately impacted by homelessness, poor housing, and other life-threatening conditions. I truly hope that we can all get behind this project and get involved with it in a positive and constructive way. It's amazing what happens to ourselves as humans when we offer care, companionship, friendship, and humility to our neighbours. Thank you.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, but we do appreciate you taking the time to call into council tonight.
Thanks.
Next on the list, we have speaker number two, Matthew Nguyen.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Hi. Hi, thanks for taking my call. I'm going to forgive, I'm going to ask for forgiveness because I'm not eloquent as your other speakers. But I'd like to, you know, bring up some concerns here. I oppose, that's for sure. You guys have, you guys haven't said anything about the the community itself. There's significant Vietnamese population here, Filipinos, Chinese especially. Nothing. You haven't said a word about it. A lot of these folks are pensioners. A lot of these folks are small, young families with young children. And you're going to bring these folks into our neighbourhood. There's a library there, there's a park there, there's multiple schools in the area, there's two daycares in the area that serve the surrounding few blocks, and you want to bring these folks in? Yes, there is a need for housing, but the answer is not popping them in the middle of a hard-working, blue-collar neighbourhood who have to have little time to call in, sit here for three hours, and then voice their concerns. Okay, so your, all your proposals sound great on paper. But let's look at all the But let's look at all the SROs in the, in the surrounding downtown east side, for example. Anywhere, any, any space in Vancouver that houses the SRO. What happens to the community surrounding? What happens to this little Saigon that you guys have designated? What happens to these folks here? A lot of them do not speak English. A lot of them are pensioners who do not speak English. They're not gonna call in, they're not gonna oppose. I feel like your studies only have a passing knowledge of the neighborhood. Who has boots on the ground? I do. I live in the area. Do you know, do you think that that library, do you think that the library will be usable? You guys mentioned folks that are homeless. A lot of the homeless issues are mental issues and drug abuse. I've worked in, in halfway houses that treat drug offenders. Folks have a hard time breaking the habit. We're not gonna solve it by plopping them down in the middle of a community that doesn't understand what's going on. How long till you have bars on all the windows? How long till the Save on Foods has doubled the amount of security? You have, what, a hundred and fifty-three bike spaces? How many of those bikes are gonna be taken from King Edward Village? How many, really, to be honest? How long till that park is covered in tents? We all know that, that a lot of these SROs are house hoarders. Okay, hoarders who complain that they don't want to give them there for the judges.
Yes, sorry, Speaker, just one moment, I'm gonna stop your time.
I'd like to add.
I wonder, Chair, if you could caution the speaker not to make generalizations about the prospective tenants.
Speaker, Speaker, I'm gonna ask you just to pause any comment at this moment, sorry. Councilor Swanson, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could caution the speaker not to make generalizations about prospective tenants in this building being thieves and unsafe and things like that.
Thank you, Councilor Swanson, noting your, your request. And yes, I just asked the speaker to keep your comments to, to, away from generalizations of the population and more just focusing in on your concerns.
These are my concerns. These are my concerns. It's, you guys provide a shiny, shiny, you know, a shiny proposal here, but it takes no account into what bringing in a significantly sidelined portion of this community, of this city into our community. How do you pick up needles out of the, out of a playground? Who does this? What is your plan to curb this? What is your plan to take the tents out of that park? This community, this community already has, in that one square block, four different condos, including this King Edward Village. There's one being built on the old Rona site. I don't know how many, how many, uh, units there are in there. There's a rental unit perpendicular to that, and there's a little unit along Knight. So your density is gonna be tripled. How are you gonna deal with this? Invariably, you can just fight it all you want, invariably, there's gonna be increasing crime, a significant uptick. The neighbor to that, that building that you're proposing is a little Chinese lady. How is she gonna, gonna act? Do you think she's not eventually gonna be victimized? Ask yourself this. Be realistic. Let's not be so fuzzy about this stuff. Okay, the only thing this proposal has going for it is that there's a fire hall next door. There's a fire hall there. How long till there's a, there's a, there's, there's, what, in the last two or three months? There's a, a fire in these SROs? Let's be honest here. Let's not pretend that everything's all shiny and new.
Apologies for interrupting, but that is the end of your time.
Do not, I, I believe I was interrupted several times. I believe I at least have thirty seconds.
I accounted for that time. I counted for that time. So that does bring you to the end of your five minutes.
I'd like to say one more thing.
There, there, actually, unfortunately, we have to stick to the five minutes so that it's equitable for all of our speakers who call in. So I'm gonna have to pause it there. There are no questions, but we do appreciate you calling into council. Okay, next, council. On the list, we have speaker number three, Kathleen Potter.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Potter, and I grew up in Vancouver. I've been a social worker for twelve years, and I'm currently practicing on the downtown east side, although I've also had the opportunity to work in various communities throughout the lower mainland, Canada, and internationally. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of the proposed supportive housing building at fourteen oh six and fourteen ten King Edward Avenue. In my career, I have witnessed firsthand the impact that a lack of safe and stable housing has had on the most vulnerable and marginalized members of our society. Unfortunately, I have also witnessed the positive impact supportive housing has had, both on individuals and communities. You've heard and will continue to hear specific examples of the positive impact supportive housing has had. However, I wanted to use my time to address some of the concerns identified by those living in neighboring communities. Most people can agree that supportive housing is a positive thing for people experiencing homelessness. However, the idea of these buildings going up in your neighborhood can understandably cause some concern if you don't know the facts. I wanted to share with you some data on the impact of supportive housing, and particularly the impact in three main areas of concern for many people who oppose supportive housing in their neighborhood. These are increased taxes and burden on the system, increased crime, and decreased property values. So according to the 2020 City of Vancouver Homeless and Supportive Housing Strategy, the average cost of the system in health and/or correction services for an individual experiencing homelessness was $55,000 per year, while the average cost of the system for an individual in supportive housing was $37,000 per year, which is a decrease of $18,000 per individual per year. Similarly, a 2001 B.C. study found that taxpayers saved $12,000 per year for every homeless person moved into supportive housing. The City of Vancouver has also identified that after six months in supportive housing, ninety-four percent of individuals remained housed, eighty-four percent identified improved overall well-being, fifty-four percent had improved access to employment, and thirty-nine percent identified improved, improvement in their addiction. What we can gather from this data is that supportive housing actually has the potential to decrease taxes in both the short and long run. What I've heard from many people also is a concern about increased crime in the areas surrounding a supportive housing building. However, the evidence indicates that typically the opposite is true. In Toronto, over a ten-year period between 1997 and 2006, the neighborhoods surrounding a supportive housing facility experienced a twenty-seven percent drop in 911 calls, a thirty-two percent decrease in sexual assault, an eleven-point-five percent decrease in other assaults, and a general decline in breaking and entering and theft. According to a 2018 longitudinal, longitudinal study of housing status and crime in a homeless population, recent crime was consistently higher in groups who were homeless relative to groups who were housed, and crime rates fell after obtaining housing. A 2013 study from Simon Fraser University on the impact of the Housing First model on criminal behavior among formerly homeless adults with mental disorders, where sixty-seven percent of individuals had previous involvement with the criminal justice system, showed that scattered-site housing first, which is to say low-income or supportive housing in sites across a large geographic area, was associated with significantly lower numbers of sentences than if these individuals had remained homeless. Now, the scattered-site piece, which is the sites outside of the downtown east side, is particularly important, as congregate housing first was associated with only a marginally significant reduction in sentences. What this tells us is that by spreading social and supportive housing out across our communities, we avoid ghettoization and foster diversity within all of our communities. Likewise, it allows people experiencing homelessness to remain in the communities where they already live. The final area of concern I want to address is property values. We all know property values, and the current housing market is really intense right now. And so it's understandable that people might be concerned about their property values if a supportive housing building is going up in their area. Fortunately, in a 2018 B.C. study, professional appraisers tracked the impact of seven social housing projects across the lower mainland, Vancouver Island, and the interior. In every case, neighbors opposed the projects because they feared their property values would decline, thus threatening their investment. Over five years, the appraisers tracked sale prices among nearby houses and compared those to a control area. The study found housing prices near the controversial projects increased as much or more than houses in the control area. In addition, there was no evidence of panic selling or of houses taking extraordinarily long times to sell.
I'm gonna just have to pause you there. Sorry, Kathleen, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but that is your time. You're at five minutes. It does go quickly, but you do have questions from Councilor Kirby Young.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Just one moment here. Councilor Kirby Young, you have five minutes. Questions to the speaker.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and thanks, Kathleen. I'm sorry if I missed it, because you had a lot of information there, but did you cite the source of a number of those stats that you were sharing?
I can send you, I can send you all of the citations. I didn't specifically mention the citations, but I can send you all of them.
Yeah, if you, if that's in your, your notes, or whatever the best way is, if you could email that to Mayor and Council, that would be really helpful to have.
Absolutely. Is there an email address I can send it to?
Yeah, the clerks can help advise you on the phone, but it's also easily accessible on the, on the, on the website.
Okay, so just to Vancouver City Council?
Yes, that would be super.
Okay, I can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Bligh, if I might just step in. If the, if the speaker could send it to the the speaker's request email.
Yes, so, speaker, speaker, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay. I was just making sure I had that right. And then that way, we're able to post it as well, so the public can also see.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great, that's confirmation there, so thank you. Any further questions, Councilor Kirby Young?
No, all good, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to the speaker for calling in. I appreciate hearing your perspective tonight.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have speaker four, Jill Atkey.
Good evening, Chair Bligh and council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm calling in tonight from the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh people. My name is Jill Atkey, and I am the CEO of B.C. Nonprofit Housing Association. I currently live in Vancouver, and should note that I also lived in Kensington Peter Cottage for about ten years. I know the area quite well. And that includes having my children in daycare near the proposed site. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of the rezoning of fourteen oh six and fourteen ten East King Edward Avenue, and in support of the hundred and nine homes that are proposed for the site. While I do believe that almost any location in Vancouver is a good location for affordable housing, King Edward and Knight is a particularly good location because of its proximity to transit amenities, which include library, a library, and plentiful green space. Given what we've learned through the Heat Dome and the recent Coroner's Report, access to shaded green space, this is particularly important. The only downside, and this is being pointed out already, of this location is it being on a major arterial, exposing residents to considerable pollutants. But it does sound like this is being considered by the proponents and has been addressed. That said, I'd encourage the city to prioritize neighborhood locations away from arterials for supportive and affordable housing. So I could speak about endless data. We know that it exists. Studies and reports exist. Kathleen has just cited quite a number of them that tell us that supportive and affordable housing is critical to supporting some of the people experiencing homelessness and the long-term positive implications for their health and well-being. But Richard and Kyla have already told you about how their work contributes to those positive outcomes around health, health and well-being already. I could also spend some time talking about how colonization has led to Indigenous people in Vancouver being significantly more likely to experience homelessness and housing insecurity. But you also already know that, because Vancouver is a city of reconciliation. So I would ask you to consider that as you consider this proposal. So approvals for supportive and affordable housing are not just about the hundred and nine people who will have new homes on day one of this development, but about the literally thousands of people who will come after them. And I was trying to, to kind of figure out a number to put on, on that. And, you know, if this, if this is a sixty- or seventy-year lifespan of this building, there will literally be thousands of, of individuals who will benefit from, from this building over time. And then finally, we've also spoken in previous public hearings about the need for more investment from senior levels of government into supportive and affordable housing for people experiencing and at risk of homelessness. B.C. M.P.H.A. has asked for those investments. The City of Vancouver has asked for those investments. And now the investment from C.M.H.C. is here for this particular project. The investment from B.C. Housing is here. The investment from the city is here. All three levels of government are aligned on this project. We just need this council's support to get one hundred and nine much-needed affordable homes, affordable and supportive homes built. So for, for these reasons, I'm in support of these new homes, and I'm really hoping that you'll support them as well. Thank, thank you for your time this evening.
And thank you. You do have questions, Counselor Weep.
Yeah, thanks, Jill, for coming to speak today. You talked about knowing the neighborhood and how important it is to have community services to support a building like this. Can you talk a little bit how the neighborhood has good community support? You talked about a library that would help make this project a success.
Sure, I think, you know, what we know from supportive housing, affordable housing projects, that proximity to amenities is really, really important. So a lot of those are amenities that anyone wants to live close to. You know, library for individuals living in this building, groceries, access to, to other services, and, and in particular, green space. But then in terms of supports, those supports will be built into the housing and be onsite. And as the proponents have mentioned, the supports, the particular supports will be developed as the building is, is tenanted and it's better understood what the needs of, of tenants will be at that time. But it's a pretty vibrant community with, with a lot of access to transportation and, and the amenities that we all need and desire from our communities.
So you think this community has the amenities to support a project like this?
Yes, I absolutely do.
Thank you. We appreciate your point of view.
Thank you.
And thank you. Those are all of your questions tonight, but we appreciate you calling in at this late hour to speak to council.
Great, thank you so much.
Next, we have speaker number five, Paul Sanchez.
Not on the line.
Thank you. Speaker number six, William Azarov.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. You're welcome to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Well, thanks, Chair and council. I'm William Azarov, CEO of Brightside Community Homes Foundation, and speaking to express our full support for the rezoning application in front of you tonight. The hundred and nine homes this project will provide are critically needed. And the unit mix of both affordable rental homes and homes with supports will play an important role in homelessness mitigation. We're especially glad to hear that Vancouver Native Housing Society and Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Center Society have been selected to operate the project, as both organizations play an important role in ensuring equitable and culturally safe homes for Vancouver's urban Indigenous residents. Vacancy rates for truly affordable rental homes remain at record lows, and with homelessness on the rise, the combination of supportive and affordable housing this rezoning application proposes will have a significant positive impact on the community. Supportive housing in particular is key to helping mitigate homelessness. We at Brightside continue to be inspired by the work being done by both Vancouver Native Housing Society and the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Center Society, and recognize the tremendous impact they've made, they have, in helping prioritize the needs of the cities unhoused and those most in need. We have no doubt that these two organizations will operate the building with the utmost competency and due care for the community. We support this proposal wholeheartedly and encourage and encourage the council to do so as well. And I just want to add, just make a comment directly to the applicant team, which is, I'm sorry you've had to listen to some upsetting material tonight. When you do, you're important and needed work. And I just want to express my thanks for all they do and all you do. important and needed work, and I just want to express my thanks for all they do and all you do for the community. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, there are no questions, but we do appreciate hearing from you tonight.
Excellent, have a good day.
You too, thank you. Uh, next we have speaker number six, Mark Moredic. Oh, sorry, that's speaker number seven, my apologies. Speaker number seven, Mark Moredic.
I, uh, it's the clerk here, Chair Bly, and speaker seven is not on the line.
Thank you very much. Uh, speaker number eight, Anna Hoff Marks.
Yes, speaker eight should be on the line.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you just fine, yes, so you have five minutes to speak to Council. You're welcome to start whenever you're ready.
Okay, uh, so my name is Anna Hoff Marks and my maiden name is Anna Trong, and I am of Chinese and Vietnamese descent. My father and mother's family were Vietnamese refugees and one of the first people who arrived in Vancouver in the seventies. My family and sister's family have strong and solid roots in this neighborhood. Paul, you will be the little old Chinese lady that Speaker number two referred to. I currently work with a senior population in a nonprofit setting. In that path, I have worked as a housing outreach worker and it was my job to help homeless seniors find housing. I stopped doing this job because it got hard. There was such little housing available then and even less now. But I, I'm not here to argue that social housing is needed. We all know that affordable housing is a crisis. This is something that even our neighbors who are opposing this project have agreed on. We need housing now. The concerned citizens say this project will bring unravering characters into the neighborhood. There are schools, daycares, libraries nearby that we should consider, stats will go up, et cetera, et cetera. The idea that future tenants will bring crime into this neighborhood is largely based on negative stereotypes and discrimination. In fact, tenants of supportive housing projects are more likely to be victims as they are vulnerable and targeted. According to a longitudinal study based on, uh, Toronto from 97 to 06, the neighborhoods surrounding a supportive housing project experienced an overall decrease in dispatch calls, assaults and in breaking and entering crime. They found that the decline, um, decline emerged across the city as a whole. It is also notable to mention that successful community opposition to this project may in fact create more crime by reducing the number of options open to those individuals who otherwise have recited and received care in these proposed facilities. And this is not my opinion, these are actual findings of actual academic studies. This housing project will house community members that already call Cedar Cottage home. The future tenants are already current tenants. And this project will provide a sense of relief for many of our current neighbors with the reduced rents. Um, I, I want to tell you a story about Mr. Cho. Mr. Cho was one of my pa, uh, previous housing outreach clients, and he came to my agency as he needed help to find safe, affordable housing. He was staying in a homeless shelter. He was 74 and spoke very little English. He spoke Cantonese, and so do I. Um, he was housed in a moldy, dark and musty studio basement suite. One cold winter, he got into a fight with his landlord as he turned on a portable heater which blew a circuit due to poor wiring. The next week, his landlord threw his belongings out and changed the lock. Mr. Cho found himself in a shelter for the first time in his life, did not know what to do. He got housed in a very similar proposed project in East Vancouver. He is thriving and so happy. He shares his veggies with his neighbors and enjoys knowing he has a safe, clean and secure home to go to. He wishes this for everyone. Now, Mr. Cho's story is not unique. This was actually quite a common story that I've heard again and again. The idea that we should be scared of the future tenants is absurd. The idea that we need to protect our children from these tenants is based on fear, stereotypes and discrimination. I am a mom of a four and a seven-year-old in this neighborhood and we will personally deliver welcome baskets to this building once it's up and running. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Uh, you do have questions, Councilor Swanson?
Yeah, thank you so much for coming in, Anna Mae. That was wonderful. I don't really have time. We have a support, another supportive housing application, will you come and speak to that too?
Absolutely, I know there's another one coming up relatively soon.
Okay, we should probably keep the questions to the focus of the specific application, so unless there's another question, Councilor Swanson will pause it there.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much to the caller, those are all your questions. Okay, great. Uh, so speaker number nine is Michael O'Shaughnessy.
I'm just checking, uh, Chair Bly, I believe speaker nine isn't, no, we unmute it, but speaker nine is not on the line.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, uh, the next caller is speaker 10, M Wickham.
Hi, I have slides.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. I'll just ask the clerks if we can bring those slides up, please.
Uh, Chair Bly, we're just checking, the slides would have had to have come to us at an hour before.
Oh, no, they came at like nine in the morning.
Okay, so we're, we're just seeking them out, if you could just...
And I know I had a con, a confirmation email that they were received and sent aside.
Okay, we're, we're just retrieving them, Chair Bly.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll just give it a, a couple of minutes to have clerks pull them up.
Okay, they are on the presentation board.
Okay, just a reminder, speaker, that when you would like the slide advanced, to simply say next, and we'll move that a slide for you, uh, we'll move it along, so you can start whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. All right, good evening Chair and Counselors, I'm Marlene from Vancouver. I'm not stating in a pose or support position, but would like to make comments pertaining to this and similar projects. Firstly, the building is beautiful. It has interesting textures, natural colors and sophisticated cultural design elements. It looks like an expensive market building. However, I cannot get over the large size of this building on this small lot. It looks like it's sitting on the sidewalk at night in King Edward, unlike the buildings to the north of the project. Next slide. There is no transition in height to the park behind it or to the single-family homes beside it. This has a jarring effect. Slide three. I identify with the values, ambitions, fiscal responsibility and creativity of the project's Indigenous partners. From Akola Development Services, our approach is driven by values and goals that go beyond the fiscal bottom line. Social purpose underlies all the work we do. We are focused on the people, the process and the community. From Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society, to provide practical tools for accomplishing our visionary ends through socioeconomic programs and services that empower self-alliance, responsibility, success and prosperity for all urban Aboriginal individuals, family and community. And Vancouver Native Housing Society. In addition to family and supportive housing, residents, the NHS runs two Indigenous social enterprises called Squatch Eyes Lodge and Gallery. Squatch Eyes Lodge is also home to our Artists and Residents Program, a program that houses, supports and provides Indigenous artists with a place to live and create. The artist rents are subsidized by the hotel and gallery revenue, and if not already seen, I would encourage viewing of the videos on the Squatch Eyes story. Slide four. I then realized that this rich knowledge base has not been used in the Broadway Plan or the upcoming Vancouver Plan. In fact, from the undrip task force presentation last week in Council, urban Indigenous viewpoints are not being considered by city staff until a future summit in 2023. Unfortunately, I'm seeing Vancouver as a city of missed opportunities. If you don't look for the opportunities, you can't see them. The building concept of this project and the one at Arbutus and Eighth predate the pandemic. Economic realities are different now with inflation, especially food and gas prices and rising interest rates. Even BC Housing has halved the number of shelter rate units and replaced them with hills rate units. How can you increase the financial resiliency of such projects to endure the length of a 60-year lease? I believe the concept of a 100% social housing building is outdated. There should be mixed rental rates onsite. There should be a ground-level business to subsidize the project and provide valuable work experience and references to those the project is meant to support. As already stated, the involved partners understand how to achieve this. Slide five. Onsite work placement not only provides financial resiliency, but also improves the health of those being supported. Being without work is associated with increased rates of death, suicide, obesity, heart attack, depression, alcohol consumption, illicit drug use, accidents, poverty, alienation and criminality. Please go back to slide four. Having a ground-level business would allow an opportunity to meet people from the larger community and form relationships. The CMHC-funded Luma and Happy City Study entitled Recommendations and Roadmap for Social Wellbeing in Modular Housing stated that employment opportunities should be nearby and that project design allow for safe socialization with the greater community. Slide six, please. An updated Indigenous housing model at a lower density could have been a good fit with Arbutus and Eighth location as this area really needs personally invested, motivated people to be eyes on the street and help protect the area from the influx at the intermodal subway station and bus loop. A ground-level Indigenous business near the Arbutus Station and Bus Loop could have dominated the interests of transit riders and Arbutus Greenway users for decades and brought long-term financial resiliency. Last year I had written such a letter to Mayor and Counselors, and the Mayor had even called my idea vivid and referred it to staff, but it went nowhere. And no one thought of involving Indigenous leaders in the Broadway Plan so as to weave in business and cultural opportunities at the different stations as part of reconciliation. Although an Indigenous housing project would have been well-suited to the Arbutus site, the Nighting King Edward location is better for this project since it is comparatively less confined for space and less mired in provincial and city politics. In conclusion, my hope would be that the operators allowed more space and flexibility to create beneficial tenant opportunities over the next 60 years. With 55 of the 109 people in this building requiring supportive services, I sincerely hope that the operators will have adequate funding over the next 60 years to achieve their goals and that these people will be able to experience the satisfaction and joy from their accomplishments. Thank you for your time, I will be happy to answer questions.
And thank you very much, that was perfectly timed. Um, you did express yourself very well, there are no questions for you this evening.
Right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have speaker number 11, Manuel Reyes.
Yes, hello, are you there? Hello, hello?
Yes, we can hear you, you have five minutes to speak to Council, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, what my concern is, is that, um, is this building strictly for Indigenous heritage tenants or is it for general low-barrier population?
So, right now we're, we're hearing your comments and you have five minutes to share them. If there are any questions, counselors will be able to reflect those if they choose to, back to staff when we have our final round of questions to staff. So you're welcome to share questions, but they won't be answered right away. Um, right now we're just here to hear your comments.
Oh, I thought this was a question, I thought, oh, okay, I misunderstood, but, uh, I thought this was questionnaired. So, okay, well, my concerns are that, um, I'm opposed to the project at its density level, at its current density. Uh, yeah, I'm just concerned about how the people who are managing the building, if they have ever, if they have a history of managing this amount of units. And, um, I'm also worried about the, uh, programs that they're, uh, want to implement. Um, they just say that they're, want to make them up as they go along, that's what the, that's how, that's what was conveyed, um, because they want to see what the permits are, the spacing and the layout. It's, it's all very, it's not concrete, it's very vague and it's very, um, fly, uh, you know, fly by the seat of your pants sort of thing and on the program setup portion of it. And, uh, I understand that there were 14 floors of modular construction, which is actually equivalent to 19 floors in height. So this is a big concern to me, uh, just the behemoth size of it is, uh, you know, just to have them all warehoused in one, in one space. And that is, and I want to address also that the studio, the 109 studio units, it's, it's all, like, all the other projects that we spoke about earlier this evening, this is a whole different animal. Those are all company-oriented building projects. This one is strictly for single individuals in studios. So it's conducive to, uh, single male. I don't know if they're going to, uh, integrate with women, um, obviously no children there because it, no one has spoken that it's actually going to be a safe injection site. Not one word of it has brought, been brought up. So, um, these are things that are very, uh, skillfully omitted. And, uh, these are a lot of, uh, things that I'm concerned about. So also the safety of the parks and the play, and the playgrounds in the neighborhood. Um, because everything's been glazed over on studies, academic studies and this, but, you know, in real life, I've actually been to these sites and I know what happens in there. You can walk into any one of them and it's a network of crime. They're, they're doing transactional sales of stolen bicycles, um, drugs, of sex. And I'm not overstating this and I'm not understating it either, so, uh, these are things that have been witnessed with my own eyes. And so it's something that's very disturbing on how everything's just sort of glazed over and, um, just sort of whitewashed, very much whitewashed. And, uh, you know, the only, and the things with the overdoses in the, in the area, um, so are people going to be, uh, subjected to more and more anonymous calls and more police calls in the neighborhood? Uh, this is a rhetorical question because we all know that's exactly what's going to happen. And, um, this is another very real concern. Um, you know, they say in all these studies that, uh, crime doesn't go up or, that's just, that's just nonsense, it's absurd. Crime does go up in the area, petty theft goes up in the area, um, so these things are all real life and I'm just worried about...
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but that is your time, and I wonder, you do have questions from a counselor here, so I'm going to pause your timer there and move to council questions. So, uh, Councilor Kirby Young, over to you.
Yeah, uh, thanks Manuel for speaking to Council. Um, I'm going to give you a bit of background on this question to set the stage on the question. Counselors are often told that we have a regulatory land use hat for determining things by density, but that things like teneting and determining services comes later in the process. And I'm wondering, based on some of the feedback we're hearing, if you think that we need to be thinking, changing that model a bit to be thinking about who may be living there so that things like complex care, which is something the mayors are advocating for, where there are more health services available, more supports for people, we're actually designing buildings to support people that are going to live there as opposed to designing the buildings and then afterwards theoretically determining the tenant mix and the services, but at that point, the buildings aren't necessarily designed for those specific folks. You have to fit people into a building that's already been structured. Do you have any comments on that?
Well, yeah, I'm just, well, it's all misleading, it's all very misleading on how the Indigenous component is, uh, integrated into this. It's conveyed like it's going to be all Indigenous heritage individuals. So, and very much so, it's confusing. So is there going to be just a whole general, um, there's going to be no restrictions on who's coming in as to their heritage, it's just low-barrier housing? I mean, I like, I want people to call it what it is. I don't want it to be under this thin veil of it being Indigenous rooted. It's very, very, very misleading.
Okay, you'd appreciate more transparency about the whole process. Yeah, we seem to get stuck in these procedural parameters.
Obviously, I don't, yeah, yeah, I don't, I can't really, I don't really know why it has to be explained that we want more transparency.
Yep, no, thanks, I, I, that's helpful, thanks for taking the time to speak tonight.
So was there, I have other questions, are there, are there... So, was there, I have other questions, are there, do I have time to ask other questions?
No, so, so, your time is, is up and councillor Kirby Young's questions are complete, so we'll be moving on to our next speaker.
Okay, well, the fourteen floors is actually nineteen floors in height, that's a very, that's very, very.
Okay, you're going to have to move us on. Thank you very much for calling in and speaking to council. Okay, so we are moving to our last registered speaker, speaker number twelve, Jim Dennis.
Chair Bly, it would appear speaker number twelve is not on the line. We did have an unidentified speaker, but it is, is not that person. We do have other speakers on the line, but you're quite correct, that was the last registered one.
Okay, well, I'll do my second call and then we'll hear the speakers that are on the line and then we'll do our third call. So, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So, we have speakers on the line to provide comments on this item. And clerks, I'll have you guide us to our next speaker on the line.
Yes, thank you. We had a registered speaker thirteen, they withdrew. We have a registered speaker number fourteen. I'm not so good with pronunciation of names, but Brianna Brooks, perhaps?
That's me. Okay, so, yes, speaker fourteen, Brianna Brooks.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have five minutes and you're welcome to start when you're ready.
Great, thank you Chair and councillors for taking my call tonight. I just wanted to be very clear that I'm not against supportive housing. In fact, I am well aware of the housing crisis and homelessness crisis that we have in Vancouver as well across Canada. I am opposed to this particular location for a few reasons, mostly in, because of the proximity to children's, elementary schools, daycares, and homes where they live. I'm just going to point out a few things that I think that the council should take into account, kind of away from the whole aspect of the children and the location that this is. So, in the last twenty-four hours, there were twenty-four supporters online for this project, twenty-four of whom do not live in this neighbourhood. And then the majority of those that were opposed to this project online actually do live in this neighbourhood. I'd also like to point out that Mr Chan's presentation earlier, one of the first pages, showed a map of this location and it had a radius circle of the location and then the schools in proximity to this proposed project. I don't think that we should be naive that one-hundred-and-nine residents are going to be on their best behaviour. Something is going to happen. And my concern as a mother and being on the parent advisory committee for my son's school, as well as being on the Shatta Council for my building, I live in the King Edward Village number two building, I am concerned about the safety for the kids in this neighbourhood. And I, like I said, I don't think that we should be naive about that. And I just think that the, the council should really think about the, the safety for the kids in this neighbourhood. And the question that I want to pose and I'm not expecting an answer, who is going to be held accountable when something happens, if something happens? And that's it.
Okay, you do have questions, councillor De Genova.
Thanks so much, Brianna. I'm, I'm wondering if, if you could speak a little bit more. I appreciate the comments in your presentation, but what exactly is it that you're concerned about and, and in, in relation to if, if there was more support? Are you unclear about what the support is in this building? I'm, I'm realizing that, that it's not really clear in the report that we have, but what kind of report, what, what kind of support would make it okay for you to support this project, if at all? If that's a fair question to ask.
Uh, thank you, that is a fair question to ask. And there have been a number of people talking about the density of this building. And if there is support in the building, I feel like at one-hundred-and-nine units and one-hundred-and-nine residents, the supports that are in that building cannot keep track of that many people. Maybe if the density was smaller, it would be a little bit more manageable, but I honestly don't know how many staff they expect to have on site and if they're going to be there for a full twenty-four hours or if the majority of staff will only be there during daytime hours, like, it's, it's really hard to say. I know, I know that I can tell you this, that ever since the billboard went up about the project, there has been increased vandalism, increased break in enters in, like, the building that I live in, as well as, like, vandalism and breaking of windows around the businesses in this neighbourhood. So, I don't know how that we can pretend and be naive and expect that nothing is going to, to happen.
Okay, so would it, would it help you to hear what kind of supports you're planning at this point, if any, for this building?
That would definitely be a move in the right direction, yes, absolutely. I, I was at the virtual open house back in November and I did ask the planners and the development team what their plan was to mitigate any issues that might occur to the neighbourhood and they did not have an answer for me. It was blocked over all of their presentation and they did not have a straightforward answer for me to my question.
Well, I can't ask the applicant questions, but I can ask staff, our staff, questions afterwards, so I will do so. And thank you very much for making the time to speak to council tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Those are all your questions. Okay, we're going to be moving on to speaker number fifteen, Casimir Kish, sorry, Casimir Kish.
Yes, I'm here. Can I, am I coming through?
Yes, we can, we can hear you. Please feel free to go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge I'm coming to everyone tonight from the unseeated territories of the Musquee, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh people. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I, I have been following this project closely. I was part of the virtual open houses last year. And to me, this looks like a great project, supplies badly needed, affordable and supporting, supportive homes. I think this is a good location on what looks to be a site that might have been difficult to do other things with in the first place, not on the most desirable corner, I would suggest, given the busyness of that intersection. I think that the transit and amenities in the area are, are a positive for the, the future residents of these homes. And I think that the indigenous tenant focus is something that, that's important, given the, the city's priorities and where, as a community, and as a city, things that we need to see progress on. I think the amenity spaces are ample, given the size of the building, and that the, the support offices and areas in the building of that nature look to be a good ratio, given the, the size of the building. So, I'm optimistic that the, the supports will be well thought out and implemented. And I think that's going to go a long way to supporting the, the future residents in the building and that will also go a long way to, to assuring that the, these residents are set up for success. And finally, something else I forgot here. I think that the, there's been some concerns about the height. I think that just means that we'll get more needed units and that the supports will also benefit from extra square footage in the building. And that's really, I think, all I've got, so I'm in support. An earlier caller did make reference to SRO-type units. These are not that, these are self-contained units. SROs are units where kitchens and bathrooms are shared. These are all self-contained units, as I understand it. So, that's basically, oh, I should say, background-wise, my family and I have lived in this neighbourhood for about fourteen years. I have a child at a nearby school and we make good use of the, the area, the park, the library, and the nearby amenities. And I look forward to, to having more residents in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have expressed yourself well. There are no questions for you, but we appreciate you calling in.
Thank you.
And next, we have speaker number sixteen, Anna Matesku.
Yes, hello.
Hi. We can hear you, you're welcome to start when you're ready.
Okay. My name is Anna Matesku and I work as an outreach worker for one of the nonprofits in the neighbourhood. And also, I live on Kingsway and Knight, exactly on Twenty-Second and Dumfries. I live in this neighbourhood for, from two thousand, I think, two thousand and twelve, almost ten years. And when you come in Canada, I came in Canada in two thousand and ten. I'm Eastern European. I came here with my husband and my daughter, who is now fifteen and she's going to Britannia High School. This neighbourhood, I, I witnessed in this neighbourhood a lot of folks who are homeless and this neighbourhood never had an outreach team. I stepped in to support the neighbourhood because they are my neighbours and because I see them on the street all the time. I stepped in and I actually filled out application with most of the folks. I connected with modulars and housed them in the modulars. I connected with SRO up on Kingsway, housed them in the SRO. Their life has changed, their life is different. They are connected with resources, they are connected with the rice clinic up on Collwood, they are connected with Howard Society down on Kingsway. It's a tremendous change when people are housed. And the fact of Vancouver native housing is running this building, it's a plus because working in outreach for a long time, I know Vancouver Native Housing Society, it's a great, actually, manager of the buildings and they actually have a lot of support in terms of supporting folks with, you know, their different needs in terms of, of, you know, job applications or detox on is needed or mental health services or anything. I have a lot of folks I, I housed in their buildings and they are doing great. Yeah, I, I just am in the favour of the project, of the, of the project and I actually think it's an amazing idea. We have nothing like that in this neighbourhood. And I think the folks in the neighbourhood will benefit tremendously from this type of housing.
Thank you very much. There are no questions, but we do appreciate you calling in at this late hour.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're going to do now, council, is we do have some additional speakers. Clerks are going to check in with how many we have. I'll do the third call. We'll take a five-minute recess, we'll come back and hear from the speakers on the line and any others that have joined. So, this is the third call. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. And the phone number will also be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So, it is currently ten forty-four, we'll come back at ten forty-nine. We'll come back at ten forty-nine. Okay, so getting confirmation that we are ready to go. I'll just call us back to order. So we do have speaker number seven, Mark Moretic on the line.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
You have five minutes and you're free to start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to acknowledge that I live on the Anseti Territory of the Musqueam, Swamish, and Flavutu peoples. And I thank them for sharing the lands with settlers like me. I am on the same strata council as the previous speaker, Brianna, is on. And I just want to note that with all due respect for most of the speakers that are speaking in support of the project, I live very close by. And I do have some questions. I am very conflicted with it. I am committed to reconciliation. I am very passionate about supporting a project such as this. But there are a lot of questions that I do have as well. And it's not so much, I am excited about the involvement of the Indigenous community into this project. What I feel is a little bit disingenuous is from B.C. Housing and the way that this proposal was put in the first place. Counselor Dominado asked about, I believe it was Counselor Dominado, asked about the original proposal that happened. And this was through the neighborhood dialogue session. And there, the proposal was the twelve stories and ninety units. And through those discussions, and I discussed with other local community members who were on the different days that were, that the presentations went on, that the community was, if not in the majority, you know, at least fifty percent, not, very reluctant about the way that the discussions went and the lack of specific planning that went in. Brianna mentioned about security. And one of my questions to B.C. Housing was, is what is the safety plan for this building? Is there supposed to be a safety plan there? And is there considerations for the safety of the people in the neighborhood? Another thing I want to point out, one of the other city people talked about setbacks and shadows and noted how the building was in comparison to King Edward Village. It is fourteen floors there, right across the street, the King Edward Village complex. The building is only eight stories high. So there will be a noticeable shadow effect on King Edward Village from there. And next door, if not the neighboring building to the east of it, the next one up, and they're all single-story homes, is just getting its roof replaced. So that's the long-term plan there. And yet, their backyards are very exposed to the local community. Now, we had another speaker who talked about how there's homeless in the area, which is very true, and implying that she's happy with the project because these people will, who are homeless in the area, well, it seemed like she was implying they would go to this proposal. I doubt that's going to happen. The other aspect that I'm wondering about is, is it a social, is it a building that is part of the community? I've heard jealously, the other proposals or the previous applications talking about, is it in line with the community? And, you know, my fear is, this is a fourteen-story building that will have a concentrated need for critical care. How much of that will be part, fit in nicely with the character of the community? As I said, I'm a member of the strata council in King Edward Village. There are many elderly people in that building. And there are many young families in that complex. One of our fellow strata members, council members, runs the daycare. And their fear is, they walk, the ECE teachers walk their students to the park, King Crest Park, every day for exercise. How much interaction will happen? And how much of that will be negative interaction? I will end by saying, thank you, everyone, for listening, giving me the time to speak here. I am in support of reconciliation. I would like to see this project being toned down to something that will fit more within the needs of the community. And I feel that, I asked the council not to push this hastily along and that let's let the community really be given a chance, unlike what B.C. Housing has done through the duration of this process here. They have not heard the, thank you for your time.
And thank you for your time. There are no questions, but we do appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number seventeen, Nathan Davidovich.
Good evening. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Chair and members of council. This is another example of B.C. Housing Management Commission failing us as they failed us for the last twenty-plus years. We need a proper Ministry of Housing like we had before. B.C. was the first province in Canada to have a full-time Minister of Housing, which we don't have now. Why not buy the whole block east of Knight Street, about thirteen isolated single-family homes? We then can build a model community, affordable rentals for over one thousand people. We can even copy Phoenix, Arizona, that built a brand-new model community where residents are not allowed to have cars, no parking for personal cars on site. Residents can use transit as well as taxis, rideshare, and micro-mobility. Why is Vancouver behind other cities? We will have the same problem on June twenty-eighth on Abuda Street. And you'll probably have two or three times as many people speaking. There is no mention of the need for a larger bus shelter outside this site as this is a transfer point between three bus routes. We need a wider sidewalk of at least ten feet at this bus stop. A canopy is proposed according to the engineering conditions. I assume it's probably similar to the canopy at the new women's-only UGM building on Cordova and Princess, where the canopy is very minimal and there is no bus shelter for bus routes four and seven and weather protection is not good enough. So I don't know why the staff is not proposing that, to do something better. Also, we still don't have the promised twenty-four-seven bus service along Kingsway to roll downtown. That has been requested many, many times. And TransLink, of course, doesn't want to do anything for the city of Vancouver except cutting our services and increasing our fares. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Nathan. There are no questions, but we do appreciate hearing from you tonight.
Okay.
Next on the list, we have speaker number eighteen, Aaron Ko.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. You're welcome to start whenever you're ready. You have five minutes to speak to council.
Oh, thank you. My name is Aaron Ko. I live in the neighborhood of this proposed development. The young family and young children, I am opposed to this project because of the inherent safety concerns with introducing social housing to an area in close proximity to where children and young families reside. I resonate the similar concerns the first opposed speaker indicated. Is there a plan to keep the nearby park where kids and pets play safe, free of discarded drug-lit debris, vagrancy, harborage as a potential result of this new adjacency? It may not be something that the planners feel will happen, but I wonder if this is even being considered for the sake of the safety of the residents of the neighborhood. I understand the need for affordable housing, but there must be a better alternative that does not introduce this kind of risk to an otherwise safe area and that does not identify with the culture of the neighborhood, though we change it. I'm also horrified by the fact that the previous caller noted that daycare plays in the playground every day as there will be a potential for increased risk. Do we need to hire or consider park attendants to sit through the playground for dangerous paraphernalia? I think it's also noteworthy that the majority of those in favor do not reside in the neighborhood and would not be directly impacted the same way as residents like my neighbors and I.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that the end of your comments there?
It is, thank you.
Okay, we do appreciate you calling in at this late hour and hearing your perspective. There are no questions, but thanks again for calling in. Next on the list is speaker number nineteen, Kit Soder.
Thanks, counselor. Hi, everyone. I'm Kit Soder, as I'm sure as the members know, after a few speakings at public hearings. I'm a co-chair of the Renters Advisory Committee. I'm also a resident in the neighborhood. I live less than a ten-minute walk away from the proposed location of the proposed project. And I am calling in to speak in support of the project. I've listened through the entirety of the hearing on the subject and heard a number of my neighbors speak out, expressing concerns for safety. My two-and-a-half-year-old uses the same parks. My family uses the same VPL branch. My wife and I shop at the three grocery stores within a block of that site. And we both bank there as well. We're there practically every day of the week and more than once on the weekends. I want to speak to some of the content of the proposal itself, but I would raise, Counselor Kirby Young, you raised a question to a caller about forty minutes ago, talking about the determination of tenant mix and the framing of the review and hearing process. And if you have the energy and the time, I'd love to engage on a discussion about that. Some of you might know, but for those listening in, I served the province for half a decade and finished my tenure there as the Chief of Staff to the Minister of Aboriginal Relations and Reconciliation. I served during the missing and murdered women's inquiry, the beginning of that process and much of the first year and a half of it. And I was present for both public and private conversations, grievances, and discussions of the missing and murdered. For anyone who has participated in the depth and breadth of the national shame that are missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls, I don't think that there can be a question about the impacts that need to be addressed and the moral obligation to answer the call for justice in the commission's report. So that frames the context in which I'm speaking tonight. I have been in the room with elders and family members who have had their children robbed from them, with the family members of people who were homeless on the streets and murdered by victim. And we have an obligation as a city to right the historic wrongs of our governments. We have an obligation to make space in our neighborhoods, my neighborhood, for these neighbors. We absolutely have to give houses to the largest mixed urban Indigenous population in the country because it cannot fall to the Musqueam, Swamish, and Flavutu to make space for many, many more Indigenous people who are also living on their territories. It's our job as Canadians to meet that need. I spoke with my wife about twenty minutes ago when there was the break, letting her know that I'd be late to bed speaking to this issue. And she asked me about the context in that five, seven minutes of the project and whether or not there were justified concerns. I outlined the concerns of our neighbors. She looked at me. She said, the corner of Knight and Kinghead? And I said, yep. And she said, right across from the Savon? And I said, yep. And she said, where would there be a better site? My family will feel safe with these neighbors. We have a moral duty to meet the need of the unhoused. And I strongly encourage all of the members of council to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no questions, but we do appreciate you calling in at this late hour and sharing your perspective. Next on the list, we have speaker number twenty, Simon Davy.
Chair Bly, I've just been told that the speaker has been disconnected. I don't know if it was deliberately or not deliberately, but the speaker is not on the line.
Okay, no problem. If they reconnect, then we can come back to that speaker. Speaker number twenty-one, Manny.
Hello?
Hi there, we can hear you. You have five minutes to speak to council. Very good. And is it a single, one name? Or do you have a first name, last name you'd like to register on the record?
Single name's fine.
Single name's fine? Okay, no problem. You're welcome to start when you are ready.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the, talking about the people who are managing the building, how much experience they do have to manage such density if they do have experience in executing that amount of people in critical care. That's a big concern. And also, the other sites that the city has designated for supportive housing that are close by, just wondering how concentrated it is in our neighborhood. I know that there is one on Nanaimo and Kingsway. And I also know that up the ways where the old sixteen-hundred motel site is, that's also been designated for supportive housing. So I'm just wondering about if they could explain the entire context of what's actually going to be in this neighborhood? Because it seems that, it seems like it's kind of concentrated in Kensington here. And, yeah, also, about the drug use in this facility. Wondering about how that's going to be managed. Just worried about if the neighborhood has to worry about learning how to administer Narcan to some of these residents. That's a concern. And then leaving actually drug paraphernalia in the local parks where the children, where the daycare children go to on a daily basis to get out and play. So all of these are grave concerns. And, yeah, that's, I guess that would wrap it up.
Okay, thank you very much. Those, there are no questions for you, but we do appreciate you raising those questions and sharing your perspective and calling in at such a late hour.
Sure, I was just, there's one quick question, is that will they state what is the current status of the rezoning application and the timeline that it's?
If that's a question that you're posing, councillors are listening to speakers' comments and will be, have an opportunity to reflect back what they've heard to staff.
Okay, to staff. They won't address it now?
No, this, right now is not about question and answer coming from speakers. This is simply a time for you to be able to share your perspective, and anything that councillors hear, they can reflect that back to staff as questions.
All right. And then any responses will be posted on the, on the site, sort of thing, as to what the results were of this meeting?
What, so clerks, would you mind clarifying the process for this, for the caller, for the speaker?
Yes, so quite correctly, the speaker can make contact with staff, or if we have your email, we can get in touch with you to let you know where you can monitor the process. But it should be on the city's website? So yes, that is rightly done, Chair Bly, through staff and not at a public hearing.
Right, and will there be another public hearing? An additional public hearing later down the road?
No, there's only one public hearing in this process.
Okay, so there's, oh, so you're telling us the decision will be made, and then it'll be posted, is that what's, is that what's, how it's gonna?
What I'm going to ask you to do is be in touch with the clerks, and they'll be able to respond in writing what the process is so that you feel fully informed and that you understand it.
Okay.
This is the public hearing for this particular project. Okay. Thank you very much for calling in. Okay, so next we're going to be moving to ask if there are any further speakers on the line.
Yes.
Hello?
Hi there, if you wouldn't mind stating your first and last name and whether you are a resident of Vancouver?
My first name is Simon Davy, are you, sorry, am I the one being heard? My name is Simon Davy.
Oh, great, you're caller number twenty. Okay, excellent, Simon, yes, please, you have five minutes to speak to council, please go ahead.
Great, it's very late, I'm not going to take five minutes. I live on East Fourteenth Avenue near Commercial Sky Train Station. Good evening, Chair and Council. I am very happy to support this application this evening. We've talked about the fact that there is a very significant housing crisis in our city, and this proposal is going to provide for Vancouver residents who are most in need. I think it's important to share these resources around the city, which, you know, I think is being done well. I would like to say congratulations to Vaha, the city, BC Housing, and CMHC for creating an MOU and working together to get this as far as it is, and hopefully to the finish. I think you've chosen a great site with the Park to the South, you're not going to get shadowing, it's open space, which is wonderful. You've got a very dense development across the street, which means this building is really tucked in behind that building. It's not going to impact a whole lot of neighbors. Obviously, there's single family to one side, but presumably that is going to end up being redeveloped over not too long of time, given the density going there. I think it's an extremely attractive building, really happy that it's supportive housing, which means, of course, that there are staff and support in the building, much greater than just a property management firm, which means, you know, things are being dealt with on-site and residents are supported, which creates a much healthier community and, I think, provides answers to a lot of questions people have raised about how those tenants are supported and work in the community. I'm really happy to see a positive development to serve the most marginalized in our city, and congratulate everybody who's brought it forward, and hope that council approves it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate you calling back in and hearing your perspective tonight. There are no questions.
Great, thanks.
Thanks so much. Okay, so just asking if there's any other callers on the line who would like to speak to this item, please, please introduce yourself, state your name for the record. We are showing one last caller that's unknown, unidentified on the line, so if that is you, please feel free to come off of mute and state your name for the record.
Chair Bly, I'm just, we're just double-checking. The individual is unmuted, the last four digits of the number is eight-one-five-nine.
Hello?
Hi there, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm Grace McKenzie, and I live in Kensington Cedar Cottage, and I'm opposed to the site. There's two things that I want to talk about. One is that we haven't talked enough about the neighborliness of this building, that's the biggest problem here. The Kensington, it's actually the Kingsway Knight Neighborhood Centre Plan says that, first of all, that there should only be an exception to the plan with a three-story apartment building, and this is one hundred and sixty-seven feet, this new building. I don't see that that's the right way to go. And it also says that it should be neighborly to the adjacent buildings. Well, it's not going to be neighborly. The shadows are going to be terrible on the houses to the east of this building and also to the south. So that's really an annoyance for me, that you don't take that into consideration and you throw out all the plans that you've already built, made, you know, a waste of everybody's time. The other thing is, they've got one of these type of housings up on thirty, twenty-three-hundred block of Copley. Well, since that was put in, our shed has been broken into, the basement windows have had the screens taken off them, a stolen truck was parked in front of our place, and the police had to come around, and so on and so forth. So don't throw out the fact that there is going to be problems with this building, because it will be. And the problem with the problems is that the police can't do anything about it. They don't have the tools. And if you get anything stolen from your property, then your insurance goes up. So, you know, it really annoys me that you just, that the people who are for it are all, "Oh, touchy-feely, this is a wonderful place for people to live." And it is a wonderful place for people to live. I'll go with that. But the thing is, you've also got to consider what you're doing to the neighborhood, and you're not, when you put these buildings in, you're not considering what you're doing to the people who have lived here for decades. We've been in this neighborhood for eighty years, same house, solid people. And, you know, you bring in this different type of societal person, you disrupt the neighbors, and that's not fair. It's, you know, you're thinking only of the development, it's like one development at a time, instead of thinking about what you're doing to the whole bunch. So that's my speech.
Thank you very much for calling in. We do appreciate you calling in to express your perspective. There are no questions for you at this time.
Thanks, bye.
Thank you so much. So that actually may be the end of the speaker's list. Clerks, would you confirm, please, if we have any callers on the line?
Just confirming, and no, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. So seeing there are no additional speakers, the speaker's list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comment and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to make a decision. So does the applicant have any closing comments?
Thank you, Chair Bly, we have no closing comments.
Thank you very much. Staff, any closing comments?
Thank you, Chair, no closing comments from staff.
Thank you. And council, are there any questions for staff? Councillor Swanson?
I'll move the report.
Councillor Boyle, I'd be happy to second it.
Thank you, moved by councillor Swanson, second by councillor Boyle. So we'll move to a main queue, and I'll just ask if there's any debate.
Yeah.
Go ahead, councillor Swanson.
So we need about, I figure about forty more of these. I live in a neighborhood that has two supportive housing places where people went who were, moved out of Openhammer Park when it was a tent encampment. And one of them, Taylor Manor, is sandwiched right in between a lowing children's playground and a long-term care center. And I've never seen a needle in the neighborhood, never. I talked to the guys at the Taylor Manor, they're like, "How is city council doing?" And I'm like, "Oh, fine, how are you doing?" And it's fine. And the other place is up on Hastings and Skeena, it's the old Ramada Motel. And the guys there waited at the bus stop that I wait at all the time, and when we're coming home, a lot of times they give me their seat. I just think there's so much stereotyping happening here that after the project gets built, I think people will figure it out, and that's what's happened before. And one person said that she really worried that this wasn't going to be part of the community. Well, if you want it to be part of the community, you know, bake them some cookies, you know, do something to help make it part of the community, I wouldn't be afraid of it, it'll be, it'll probably be fine, and I hope we can just push forward with this and get a lot more. This houses fifty homeless people, and we have two thousand, we do need forty more, so, yeah, let's just get on with it. Thanks, that's it.
Thanks, councillor Swanson. Councillor Carr?
Yeah, I just want to just echo councillor Swanson's comments, I won't repeat them, I just say that I agree with them. There's, you know, some people expressing fear that I really believe in my heart is unfounded, and we just have to wait for the project to come, and the people to come, and people to become neighbors. In addition to councillor Swanson's comments, I just wanted to also note that this is unbelievably affordable compared to most of the developments that we do see at public hearing, and very happy to see the depth of affordability, and really like the fact that it's passive health certified modular prefab at a height I've not seen before, which I think bodes well in terms of the kind of construction we need in an era of climate crisis, so happy to support.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Councillor Boyle?
Thanks, I'll be brief in just adding that I also strongly support this. If we want people to not be living in tents outside, we want people to be able to address their health needs and mental health needs, if we want people to not be needing to use substances unsafely outside buildings like this, housing and supports are the answer in every part of town, and this council has certainly advocated in many motions and amendments to ask for the province to be providing housing and support to address any of the challenges that we face across the city, and this is part of that solution, and so I'm glad to see it come before us, and very strongly in support of it.
Thank you, councillor Boyle. Councillor Weed?
Yeah, I'll be speaking in support, and I really appreciate the comments about the neighborhood that has green grocers and green space and libraries and the amenities needed to support a building like this. We support our neighbors, we create community, and I think this will help build a community here, and I think we always need to make sure that we do it as a cohesive unit, recognizing complexities of neighborhoods. We do our planning work, but we need to make sure that all the pieces are there, and I think this is a great fit, and a great location. I love the Dijous Gardens and other work supporting this building, so I am supportive.
Thank you, councillor Weed. Councillor Dominado?
Thanks, Chair. And like my colleagues, I'm going to speak in support of this rezoning proposal, recognizing there, we heard diverse perspectives and different voices with respect to this proposal this evening, and I think there is, I would say, at times, a lot of information that's lacking as these proposals come forward for the public to understand, and I know that many of us have had the benefit of visiting and touring different housing developments across the city of all different types of tenures, from co-ops to rental to supportive housing. And so I think that there are times where we have the benefit of seeing those in action and how they're operating, and appreciate that this is Indigenous-led and focused, and I, you know, reflecting on the comments of one of the last callers, Kit Sodder, around his commentary of recognizing the need to support the urban Indigenous population here in Vancouver, but also recognizing that stable housing is very much a gateway to the ability to build upwards in our lives. And what I heard, well, I know that staff and BC Housing wasn't able to provide the additional details this evening, was that there will be additional wraparound supports and services embedded as part of these homes, and I think that's really important, again, it's that stable housing is that gateway to furthering lives, and also acknowledging, I think it might have been Jill Atkey that reflected the positive benefits of the library, the VPL, being nearby, and I'm just acknowledging that because one of the things we do know is that literacy plays a really key role in success as well, and that many individuals may need added supports, and we see that at a young age, particularly with young children, whereas they struggle with literacy, it can actually propel them into further challenges down the road and actually can contribute to potentially ending up homeless, and so just recognizing that. And then, as I think councillor Weed mentioned, the, you know, there is the adjacent green space. But again, so, sorry, I've gone a lot longer than I had anticipated, it is a bit late now. So I'll just wrap up my comments there, Chair, and just to say that I am supportive of this proposal, and I anticipate that the operator is going to work very closely with community as well as this advances, if it's supported this evening.
Thanks very much, councillor Dominado. And councillor Fry?
Yeah, I also keep it quick and just articulate my support for this project as well, and I do want to acknowledge the fears and concerns that some folks had expressed, and this is a significant change for that part of town, and I think with change comes uncertainty. But as I look at the proponents here and the fact that this is the Aboriginal Friendship Society, and that the developers, Makola, who have done some fantastic work in the nonprofit Indigenous-led development field, and I'm very familiar with some of their projects on the island, which really integrate this sort of cultural component that we see articulated in the design and some of the amenities that this project is going to provide, the proximity to a lot of great services like the grocery stores and stuff that folks were talking about, and of course, the park. This has, this has the potential, the recipe for great success, and I totally acknowledge people's fear of the unknown, but I do have confidence that with the people involved with this, with the city of Vancouver involved with this as the landowners, I do see a real opportunity for something great. And I live in a neighborhood with lots of supportive and social housing projects, some are good. Some are good, some aren't, aren't good, but I would, I would look at this with, with a very favorable eye, and I think there's a lot of great opportunity here to bring in some fantastic neighbors and, and change lives, so.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fry? Oh, my queues just jumped around there. I just want to wait a moment to see if there's anyone else who would like to speak to this item before we call the vote. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. And that motion passes with none in opposition. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. Let me just check my notes. And just to say thank you very much to all of councillors who are still here on the call at this late hour, and the importance of getting these applications and agenda items completed today with the forthcoming amount of work that we have in agendas in the coming weeks, so. And also to callers, and thanks very much to clerks and staff for your work. So I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Dominado. Second, Counselor Carr, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, council.
Can you guys see the dog there? Passed out. Definitely bedtime.